Are you traveling for Holy Cross?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's cool.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, good.
Yeah.
All right, we have a lot to do tonight. We have some company tonight. We have a few presentations to do. I apologize for anybody who's here waiting for something later on the agenda because we have some, we have some big discussions. We're gonna be here a while. So buckle up.
Buckle up.
Board members present, Scott DePray, Mary Crumzik, Brian Sora, Katie McKenna, and Nick Lozaro. Welcome to the February 11th, 2025 meeting of the Millbury Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded and streamed by Millbury Public Access Cable Television. This meeting is also available through zoom.us/download at 886-3842-5053. Anyone participating through Zoom should state their name and address when speaking, same as if they were in the room. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna open the meeting with citizen speak, limited to five minutes per topic. Discussion or comments about town employees or board and committee members shall be avoided so as not to violate individual rights. Questions for the Board of Selectmen should be forwarded to townmanager@millburyma.gov by 4:00 PM on the Monday before the meeting. And before I recognize those who wish to get up and speak, I just wanna say, I would ask you to wait for anything. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, there are some on the table. If you're gonna address something that's on the agenda, please wait until we've had an opportunity to discuss those things and come up for citizen speak at the end of the meeting. You don't have to, but I'm asking you if you would because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss a lot of these things that are here. So with that being said, is there anybody in the room would like to do citizen speak? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? I see no hands. Okay, that was pretty easy. That's gonna help. All right, we're gonna start with guest presentations. We have several tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Barrett to come up, our Finance Director, for a quarterly update. And if you need the screen, I'm sure you can be helped with that. No screen tonight?
No screen.
Okay.
I did provide for you earlier this morning a quick summary of the general fund budget. It's in your folders. You probably haven't had a chance to look at it, but I just figured I would put it there so you had it available if you wanna take a look at it later. So at this point, we're seven-twelfths of the way through the year. Our target expenditures right now are 58% of the general fund. We're coming in at 64. So we are slightly above where we would expect to be, but a lot of that's due to one-time expenses like debt, retirement contribution, audit services, subscriptions, things like that. So the budget summary, it's in a simpler form than I sent you the last time, just as a snapshot. It's got the department budget, the expenses to date, the balance available, and then the expended percentage by department. The final debt payment is processed for the year, so it's showing up as a negative. We provided for that at town meeting in the fall with a transfer from premium and reserves. Because of the early borrowing, we needed to make that provision. We had the funds in hand, so there's a transfer that offsets that, what looks like a deficit. The liability insurance line includes workers' compensation insurance and unemployment insurance, both of which are coming in significantly higher than predicted, so that looks like it is running short, so we'll be discussing that with the Finance Committee in an upcoming meeting to make some transfers for that. The legal services budget is 75% expended halfway through the year. Again, we'll be discussing with the Finance Committee the January invoice, which was received today, and what our outlook looks like for the rest of the fiscal year, and what our plan is for transfers for that one. Snow and ice expense lines are already over-expended on salt and repairs for our trucks, so we will put an article on town meeting as we have the last few years to cover that deficit once we're through the snow and ice season. We do still have funds in the salary line for overtime and other seasonal employees. That's my quick update on the budget of expenses. Any questions before I move on?
Well, so we have a lot of weather coming, so snow and ice. We have actually spent double what we budgeted already?
No. We had our budget. We've spent, we've overspent the general expense line, so it's, the total budget that you're seeing there is two parts, it's salary and it's expenses. We've overspent the expense line on salt and vehicle maintenance by about $45,000. Salt is really expensive, and we use a lot of it, so that's gonna continue to grow. We're still repairing our trucks day to day. I mean, we had some major repairs just a week ago on one of our trucks.
Okay. So out of all of these, which one, I don't, I guess, for lack of a better word, which one are we most likely to, legal fees and snow and ice are the two that are most likely to run over what we've budgeted?
Snow and ice, legal fees, and the liability insurance are already reaching their limits. And we're in February, so I think we can cover the legal and the workers, the workers' comp liability insurance with a reserve fund transfers or other interdepartmental transfers later in the year, but we would need to see where the rest of the year falls for those.
Okay, so all in all, we're okay?
I think we're doing okay. Yep, there's just a couple, and we've had the legal line on our radar for a couple of months now. The liability insurance, we knew was gonna come in tight.
And we did flag over the last several months for FinCom, especially about the legal line item, so they know that is definitely something that we're gonna have to do a transfer for at some point.
Okay. And I'm just gonna ask it, we don't, we don't have any surprise money coming in anywhere? Like, we can't expect a windfall somewhere?
No, I don't think so.
No, we're waiting for a payment from?
I will, I'll get to a little bit in the revenues. So other expenses, other departmental things, the only thing really happening is that we are wrapping up the work on our, one of our sewer pump stations. So that's coming from the enterprise. We had an article in 2023 authorizing 2.5 million borrowing. We have not borrowed any funds on that project, but we are almost done with the project. It's coming in well under budget at about 1.44 million, so that is all we'll need to borrow. And then the, that debt payment comes from the sewer enterprise, so we'll be rescinding the remaining millions, oh six, at town meeting, which is, puts us in a really great position.
All right, that's, that's good news.
And the only other outstanding unissued debt right now is for two fire trucks authorized at last year's town meeting for 2 million. We have entered contract for those two trucks to lock in a price under the 2 million as we authorized, but we won't be doing that borrowing for probably about two years. The delivery is two years out, minimum, possibly three. So we won't be borrowing for that for quite a while, but it is authorized. So when, when we need to make a payment, we will. And we do have other unissued debt on our debt schedule, which the rating agencies do look at, so I'm gonna be pulling together that list. And when we rescind the borrowing authorization on the sewer pump station, I'm gonna include as much of that as we can because we're not going to be borrowing for those projects.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any?
Oh, I've got more.
Oh.
I just have one. I know. Snow and ice always runs in a deficit, right? Cause you don't budget a ton of money, cause it's something you can?
Yeah. Snow and ice is our one special account in the general fund. It is the only account that we are legally allowed to overspend without provision by June 30th.
All right.
We prefer not to provide, but to wait until after June 30th. We have, we have several options. We can cover it with transfers within the budget. We can cover it with transfers at town meeting, or we can add it to next year's tax rate and it increases the levy.
Okay, I know there was some little catch with snow and ice.
As long as we budget at least what we budgeted last year, we cannot reduce the budget on that particular line. That is the only, that's the caveat to allow us to overspend.
Okay, thank you.
Since I was here last three months ago, we finalized the tax rate recap, which you have all seen the proceeds of that in your mailbox. Thank you to everyone who has paid their bill on time. We are 98% collected on that first, on that third quarter bill. The next one is due April. May 1st. Motor vehicle excise bills, however, is our little Valentine's Day present to you. It's going out in the mail tomorrow, so those will be due March 15th. The motor vehicle excise bills are the largest contributor to our local revenue, which offsets our levy. And then the, but looking at the rest of our receipts through local revenues, we are on track around our benchmarks for this time of year as well. ARPA money is 81, 81% expended. The 19% left is allocated in eight different purchase orders that we must complete work by December 26th. The largest PO right now is Welock Bridge. We have several funding sources going into that one. We'll expend the ARPA first, as it's the one that we have to have a timeline on. The rest of them are in progress or waiting for the weather to improve, but we are locked in with signed agreements with all of those vendors. Capital Plan is rounding of corners, coming together. The Planning Committee has reviewed all of the submissions from all the departments, met with a lot of the departments or all of the departments through capital planning, and starting to look at priority as to what is gonna come up through town meeting sooner rather than later, using the lenses of safety and condition. So anything that is in worse than bad condition will rise to the top of that list, as well as if it's critical for safety. We contracted with a company out of Hudson last week called Capital Strategic Solutions. They're going to help us build an online database for our capital improvement plan. It's a low cost, we have a grant to fund the services, and in future, it's a low-cost item for maintenance, and it will be, they'll include training and initial setup for maintaining that capital plan. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep this train moving in the right direction. The front-facing data on that, that database will be available on the website, so anyone could pull that up and look at the, the information as to what's being planned, what's coming up. And, and they can drill down on what's going on in the status of each of the projects. And the other item that's going on in the Finance Department is we're working on the budget with the town manager. Finance Committee's been meeting with the various different department heads, going through initial overviews. We're working on refining, and their public hearing is coming up on March 3rd.
Do the chair?
Yes, sir.
What time is that meeting at?
March 3rd, 6:30.
6:30, right, thank you. And I just have another follow-up. So I was looking at the school budget. I know that we're in contract negotiations with the MTA.
Yes.
Do you have an update from either the Assistant Superintendent or the Superintendent or negotiating team if we've reached a critical point yet, or?
They are having, I believe, what is their last session on Thursday?
Okay, and they think, never mind, you can't really ask if we're gonna get an agreement, but I just?
I'm part of that team, and yes, Thursday, we're not leaving until we come to an agreement. So we'll know definitely Thursday evening.
They, they have completed some of the negotiating points, but not all of them.
Not all of them. Are you aware, or are you allowed to disclose which negotiating points aren't agreeable currently?
I am not aware of what is still on the table or what has been completed.
Okay.
But I know that they are making progress.
The only reason I ask is just, I am concerned about what that budget is gonna look like, and are you planning?
So are we.
Well, we are too.
Are you planning? Are you, how are you allocating in case you see an incredible cost of living adjustment added to the budget? Cause I, I was on the negotiating team last time, and I can speak from that experience that if we thought that was high for a cost of living adjustment, this is gonna be extraordinarily high. So I'm just wondering if?
We just had a meeting today with the Superintendent and the Business Manager, and we discussed the outlook for the entire budget and their contribution to that outlook. Right now, our, we have, our biggest driver is health insurance.
Okay.
More so than the school.
So it's, it's more health insurance, not salaries and wages?
Right, so, and it's not even necessarily related to school employees in particular. It's just the general overall cost of health insurance. So we're looking at what we can do with that to, again, and even some of it's just budgeting strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that, very informative. We're going to go to guest presentation two, Mr. Andrew Lowe for CM-RPC.
Thank you. As you mentioned, I'm Andrew Lowe from the Central Master Regional Planning Commission, which is the state-designated regional planning agency for Millbury and 39 other cities and towns in Worcester County. I wanna point out that there's a sign-in sheet that I think is over on the table on the side here. If folks wanna sign in, just that they're here for this presentation, it may go into a town grant application to show that there was public participation here. There's also an outline of what I'll be talking about over on that side table if people wanna get a copy for themselves. So I'm here tonight to give the board and residents a quick update on where things stand with the town's prospective FY25 Community Development Block Grant application. I've been working with the Town Manager, Town Planner Connor McCormack, Senior Center Director Lori Keefe, who I believe is in attendance online, as well as Josh Ryan from the Senior Center, who's also online, to develop this application over the last several months. So it's due in April. We'll savor a little bit until we get to the end, but it's well underway at this point, so I'll, I'll try to keep this quick, cognizant of the long agenda coming after this. So CDBG, for folks who aren't aware, it's a federal program. It goes to big cities on a formula basis. It goes to smaller communities through a state agency, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It's a competitive grant program. So Millbury has been very successful with this program the last several years since fiscal year 2020. In partnership with CM-RPC, the town's had grants to rebuild Pearl Street, to rebuild part of Maple Street, to conduct a housing rehab program for moderate and low-income homeowners, and to design pending upgrades to a Millbury Housing Authority property on Pearl Street, and to do some upgrades to the senior center's roof insulation. Unfortunately, every five years, the federal government releases a new dataset, which is used by the state to wait all the communities that are part of this competitive program in Massachusetts. And this year, when they redid their data and reshuffled the deck of communities, Millbury dropped from a seven out of 10 score, which is pretty strong in this program, down to a five, which isn't the end of the world, but it certainly makes it tougher to try to go out and get these grants. So meeting with the town staff over the last couple of months, I've recommended that the town try to take things step by step in this process because that maximizes the points you can get in these applications. I've also recommended that the town partner with another community who's in that exact same boat of a five out of 10 score, the town of Warren, not adjacent, but doesn't matter, you could partner Province Town and North Adams in this program. It's all eligible. And the reason I recommend that is because they have some strong projects ready to go. They have a very long track record of receiving these grants and managing them well, so I think, you know, probably a marriage of convenience for one year to try to, to get a project, you know, designed, that I'll talk about in a second, for Millbury, and then most likely have another shot at your own applications after that. So what are we, what's been developed for this year's application? Obviously, with the Senior Center staff in attendance here, we're looking at a project at the Senior Center, so this one would be a design project, so this would be a design by an engineer or a landscape, landscape architect, or a combination of the two, focused on parking improvements at the Senior Center. So the endpoint of that project would be bid-ready plans and specifications, and really what they wanna look at is expanding the parking that's on the Senior Center property, as well as looking at the traffic flow over there. And, you know, by improving the conditions there, you would also improve the ADA accessibility of that property and the parking that's available to it. So the budget, haven't gotten a final cost estimate yet, but I think it'll be in the range of $50,000 to $75,000. The project would include outreach to the Senior Center clients, as well as the Council on Aging as part of the design process. Why is this needed? Really, there's limited parking on the town property over there. I think folks might be aware that there is a parking lot adjacent to the Senior Center. It kind of looks like the Senior Center parking lot, but it's really owned by the Genesee and Wyoming Railroad. The town has had a lease to be able to use that parking over the years, but my understanding is the lease has expired.
That's correct.
And there, there have been some talks about trying to redo it, but nothing is imminent on that front. So aside from that, you know, the town doesn't control that property, but it also doesn't control the condition of that parking lot, which is starting to deteriorate somewhat. There are a lot of potholes, and, you know, just other signs of wear over there. So, you know, the idea here is to try to maximize the parking on the town's property at the Senior Center by designing some new parking areas, probably on the side, where there's a gazebo now and a garden, so some of that, you know, the, the design process would come up with alternatives and work with the Senior Center users and staff and Council on Aging to figure out what the right balance is of expanding the parking, preserving the, you know, the outdoor space that's there, and looking at traffic flow and that kind of thing. So, you know, nothing is set in stone at this point. We're really seeking funds here to, to do that evaluation and to come up with some, some alternatives for what that could look like. So once it's built, obviously, we're hoping that this will provide the Senior Center with controllable parking that has better ADA access for the seniors who utilize the center. So why is the town focusing on this project? It really comes from a basis of an existing town plan, so the town's master plan from a few years ago, focused a lot on senior services and senior facilities. And this has certainly come up in past community development team meetings, as well as other hearings and presentations with this board that focused on senior-related services, including the roof insulation project, which is also in process at the Senior Center. So we, we did have an outreach event at the center, so we got to talk to a lot of the folks who use the Senior Center and hear their concerns and preferences about the existing parking and what they would like to see. I'm here tonight. There's also a questionnaire at the Senior Center if people wanna continue to provide their input on this. And as I mentioned, since we are looking at this as a partner application with the town of Warren, they will be holding a formal public hearing as part of this application late in March, March 20th. They're also holding a community development forum tomorrow night that may talk about this project if there's any interest out in Warren to talk about it. Millbury residents are certainly welcome to either head out there or to participate remotely. If you look on Warren's website, they do have on their online calendar all the links to participate in either of these things remotely. Aside from that, next steps, so I'll keep working with the Senior Center team to flesh out the project scope and get information to go into the application, firm up that budget a little bit. I will send a request for the board to vote on and then execute a joint authorization form to participate as part of Warren's application for the grant. That will most likely be sometime in March. The application's due in the middle of April, and with any luck, we'll hear good news sometime over the summer about the grant being awarded. So I'm happy to take any questions from the board or from other folks who are in attendance.
I do have a few questions. My first one, have we partnered with anybody before?
You have. You were the lead community in partnership with the town of Dudley in your 2020 grant. So that was the one that had the housing rehab program that was shared between the two towns.
Okay, that was pretty much the only time?
Yeah, in my knowledge, at least. I've been working here, I think, since 2019 on these grants.
All right, so I was surprised when you just threw gazebo in there, cause I can't imagine that garden being torn up and turned into parking. I, I just, I don't get that at all. That's, that's a super surprise right there. So you mentioned the railroad property, and that we've had a lease. I don't know how much we've paid. A lease usually means we pay to use that space. I have no idea how much it is. And the lease has expired, so we're using it for free right now.
That's my understanding.
But let's say?
I can speak to that.
Okay, but let's say we can't negotiate a new lease with them. Maybe they want too much money, or they just don't wanna do it at all because they have some other thoughts for the property. How would they access that piece of property if they didn't go through the Senior Center parking lot to get to it?
You know, I'd have to go over there and look. I think there are curb cuts further up that property. It's a pretty sizable property that goes fairly far north from the Senior Center, but I'm not sure, you know, what that looks like, or if there are easements in place, or, but I think the curb cut that people use to get into the Senior Center now, I wanna say at least some of that is actually on railroad property already. But that, you know, a survey would be part of the design process as well, so that would iron out exactly where the property line is.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm not picking on anybody, and I'm certainly not picking on seniors that don't drive anymore, but it is the Senior Center, and a lot of people use public transportation. people use public transportation. A lot of people use the bus, the wheels that are provided. And not all the seniors that go to the senior center drive. So what is the main impetus for more parking over there? And I know if we lose the railroad parking area, then there's definitely a need. But if we get to use that area, is it that desperate of a need that we have to tear up the gazebo and the garden area and whatever else to put in parking places?
Sure. And I'll defer to Lori on some of the numbers as to how many people drive. But I do know in the limited questionnaire that we sent out, I don't know, fifteen or twenty responses so far, most of the folks say they drive or they drive with others. So a lot of folks are carpooling essentially to the senior center, although several do take the vans as well. But the vans also use the parking lot. But I think the impetus is partly the lack of long-term control of the site, but also the lack of control of condition of that property. And the railroadside is starting to fall apart with a lot of potholes. I'm sure this winter has not been kind to it. And then the other part is, you know, on the questionnaire, basically, everyone said we need more ADA-compliant parking. There are only two ADA-compliant spots that are in close vicinity to the entrance. And I think if you were to make an allowance for more parking on the other side of the building, you know, and it remains to be seen how large that area is, but I think you could put parking on a flat area back there that would be close to the door and better access for disabled folks. Because as I'm sure you're aware, the spots that are on the side of the senior center have a bit of a slope.
Yeah.
And they don't lend themselves to being disabled accessible.
More ADA-compliant parking makes absolute sense over there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say a couple of words and then, not to put Ms. Keefe on the spot, but I would like for her to comment since she's on regarding the use of the senior center lot. So in the fall, I believe, I actually met with a representative of the railroad, which was not an easy task, but nonetheless, met with one of their staff and actually walked the railroad property, which goes back way further than what I thought. And it is in complete disrepair, as you know, because you walk a lot in town and see things for yourself, and especially over in that neighborhood. There's, you know, grass growing through, there's potholes, et cetera. I've actually seen some of the seniors fall when I've been over there. So this has been something that is a concern to me, which is why when I started digging into this in the fall, realized that the lease is expired. I am scheduled to meet with some staff. Oh, I just hurt myself. That was very strange. Sorry, that scared me. I am scheduled to meet with the representative from the railroad company and some staff internally, I believe, at the end of next week to talk about what the lease would look like, if there is an expectation that there would be money exchanged. But if any repairs, so there's a couple of things. One is, we need another lease. And the other piece is, we need to come up with funding and capital to be able to make the repairs. If that's not something we can do, then I am fully in support of the CMRPC proposal because we only have so many spots. And we just talked about they're not being, they're not really ADA compliant. It's a beautiful spot. The parking lot situation is very strange because we don't own it. Years ago, when I helped open the Worcester Senior Center in the year 2000, same exact thing in Worcester, tenant owned the parking lot. And it was a twenty-year lease. It went by like that. And then they were going to sell it. And then the senior center, so it's a great problem to have because it means the senior center is successful, that we're looking at adding additional parking or expanding. Nobody is wanting to rip down anything, but if we can't make a deal with the railroad company, or there's some exorbitant costs, and we need to look at space that we do own with input from folks, and then think about, if that even happened, where could we put some type of recreational or garden space? I know there's a lot of history there, but again, we don't own that majority of the lot. So it's something that we're looking at, we're trying to plan for. But I am meeting with the railroad. I believe it's ending next week, and I'm happy to provide an update, just to kind of see where we are in the universe with a lease. And if I could, could we have Ms. Keefe speak to her parking lot observations? Hi, Lori.
Good afternoon, good evening, actually. So just my two cents on the matter. I think that I know that everybody has a sentimental piece to the garden, and that we're not looking to rip it up and pave paradise and put up a parking lot. But there's only two handicap parking spots at the senior center. That, to me, is crazy in itself. My fear is that the railroad, at any point in time, can come in and kibosh the whole thing and say, you can't use this anymore. And then we wouldn't have any parking. I mean, we had an event yesterday, and the entire parking lot was full for the majority of the day. So it's not, it's twofold. It's that the parking lot is in disrepair, but we also need more room. We need more parking. And we need more parking that's available to the town on town property. If anybody's been out to look at that parking lot, I know Nick was there yesterday. I introduced him to the parking lot. This is our parking lot. This is what we have. He saw how full it was and the disrepair that it's in. But I say our parking lot, and it's really not our parking lot. So I think the bigger picture is just, let's see what we could do with what we have. And that might not include ripping anything down. It just might include a design and a plan. But I think it's important that we move in that direction, just in case. And we do need more handicap parking, and we just don't have that. Even with the railroad property, we don't have the handicap parking.
Thanks, Lori.
Okay. So I have one more question.
I do have, excuse me, I also have numbers that I've been working on to add to the part of the grant. So I can send those out to all of you. And surprisingly, we do have a lot of people that use transportation, but we also have a lot of people that drive because seniors are sixty-five, sixty and over now. And we have a lot of people that come for our yoga, Tai Chi, Zumba. They're younger seniors. And they're not using transportation. They're coming for the classes. So, but I have those numbers available because we record everything. So I'll send those out to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So one more quick question. So like we've done with some other projects, like downtown and the municipal parking lot and Maple Street and things like that, is there any street work involved in this? A sidewalk at the top of the slope or anything in that area that would involve the street?
My understanding is there are other plans in the works for that part of the street. This would just, well, this particular project is just designed, but once implemented, it would go up to the street, you know, there would be...
It would just be senior center.
Yeah. You know, and that's a bit of a tricky area to walk, in any case, on that side of the street, because it does have that slope. And I don't believe there's any sidewalk on that side of the street either. I think it's on the other side. And there's certainly no street parking, which is another factor in the need for parking there.
And so, and I know it's a limited amount of money, but would there be lighting involved in this plan as well?
You know, that could be something we could look at as part of the design of this. I think it makes sense, given the demographic who uses the center.
Right. Yeah, because it's very dark down there.
Yeah. And one of the things we do have in, you know, this grant, it likes to have silos. They're scattered around. You can do a lot of different things in them, as long as you're within particular silos. But for seniors, there's actually more flexibility than almost any other aspect of this grant program. So I think that could be something we put in. I will say lighting's not cheap, but we can certainly find out what it would cost and what some different options look like.
Well, it sounds like we need to attend the joint session with Warren and see what kind of plan we can put together. Anybody else have any...
I have one question. Does this grant fall under the MBTA?
It does not. So it's kind of a two-edged sword here because...
I was, I saw the...
It's federal funding, which means MBTA has nothing to do with it. But on the other hand, as people know, there's some uncertainty about federal funding right now. So, you know, HUD hasn't issued any specific guidance on this. We're operating under the assumption that, you know, things will stay more or less as they have been. If that changes, I'll certainly let the town know. But for now, you know, the grant application window is still open. It's still set for April, and we're going to put together an application.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think one thing I wanted to ask was, why did our rating go down from seven to five? Was that related to, I don't know if you have detail on that?
Yeah. So for the last several years, the last five years, the state stacks the deck of communities on one metric. It's very simple. It's just the percentage of your residents who meet the moderate to low-income criteria. You know, it's all relative. I don't know off the top of my head what your percentage is now and what it was before. But within the context of all the other eligible communities, obviously, Millbury has seen that percentage of low-to-moderate income folks go down, in a relative sense at least. So that's all it was.
Okay.
And there's a large margin of error on these numbers, especially in the very small towns. But even in Millbury, I'm sure there's error bars of six or eight percent on it.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Okay. I guess the only other question I have is, you know, just seeing it firsthand and seeing some of the seniors struggle to walk from the part where I was parked, trying to get to the front door. There's a gigantic pothole, and they just go around it, you know, it's hard to plow. You know, the first thing that came to my mind was liability. So if someone is to fall and someone's to get hurt, is it the railroad's liability or is it our liability because they are going to, say, an event at the senior center? And I guess to me, you know, I think it's concerning there's no lease. And to me, the easiest solution I could think of is, do we know if they're interested in trying to sell it? I mean, it's a piece of land. It's a tiny strip. I don't know.
I asked. No. They need access. They need access to the railroad.
Yeah, I think there was a siding there. It's a fairly large, I mean, you say it's, the parking lot is a tiny strip, but the parcel of land it's on is quite large.
And the liability is assumed by the town because of the lease. That being said, it's expired. But I'm going to have that, when I meet with them next week, all of that's going to be addressed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Great questions.
Okay, anybody else?
I just had one. I know about a year, a little over a year ago, the Commission on Disability had performed a self-evaluation, I know. The majority of the municipal buildings had a couple of points. Are they being brought in the loop on this, or will they be...
I haven't talked to them yet about this. I do know Mike, is Mike Kennedy still the chair?
Yes.
I do know him pretty well. I worked with him on a few projects before. We'd be happy to be involved with them. You know, this, this isn't a terribly nuanced situation for the accessibility. You know, it's really a paved surface issue. But I'll absolutely reach out to him to make sure that they have a chance to have some input as part of the design process and to be made aware of the project if they're not already.
Perfect. That's all I had.
Okay. Ms. McKenna, what's up?
How's it?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like Ms. Keefe has a handle.
Yes, Lori.
Just to answer Mr. Sora's question, Debbie Dymick is a regular at the senior center. She's on the commission for disability. And both her and her husband filled out one of the surveys, and we talked at length about the parking lot. So they did fill out a survey. I did make copies of all of them, if you wanted to see the survey before I send them over, all the surveys over to Andrew for this grant application. You can kind of see where they stand with things. But, so I have talked to them. I know that we're going to kind of try to get a little bit more input from them on this as well. But they are aware that there's a survey and there's something going on, so.
And I do have a copy of the updated ADA plan as well, that was done a year or two ago.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you. Sorry, it was a little more than five minutes, but...
Yeah, sorry.
I know. I know. I'm with you. I'm with you. No, these discussions are good. We need to have them. So, all right. We're going to go to guest presentation three, and that's Mr. McCormick, our town planner, for our Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Hi, everyone. Connor McCormick, town planner. Just wanted to give you guys an update on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I don't think I was at the meeting where this came up, but my understanding was the board is looking for just a brief overview on what the Hazard Mitigation Plan is all about. So just wanted to give you a kind of that overview and answer any questions that you might have. This is coming straight from the state's website. But a hazard mitigation plan is a proactive effort to identify long-term strategies and actions that can be taken to reduce the dangers of life and property from natural hazard events such as extreme weather, flooding, tornadoes, wildfire, or infectious diseases. The plan identifies critical community assets and evaluates the risk from natural hazard at these locations. The plan also includes a process to develop and prioritize mitigation strategies to address hazards impacting the community. Federal law requires all municipalities that wish to be eligible to receive federal funding for hazard mitigation grants to adopt a local hazard mitigation plan and update this plan in five-year intervals. The plan includes risk assessment, hazard mitigation goals, and actionable measures. FEMA approval and town adoption of the hazard mitigation plan allows the town to apply for pre- and post-disaster hazard mitigation funds. The plan was last updated in 2019, so that's why back in 2023, we applied for a hazard mitigation grant, a hazard mitigation grant from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. We were awarded $26,400 to update our hazard mitigation plan in February 2024. We contracted with CMRPC to be the town's consultant to assist us with the hazard mitigation plan update. In June of 2024, we kicked off the hazard mitigation planning later that summer. We have a local hazard mitigation planning team of myself, the emergency management director slash fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector, the health director, the conservation agent, the town engineer, and the deputy town manager. Some of the phases that happened in the planning process include information gathering. So we've been meeting to review natural hazards in town, the critical infrastructure and facilities in town, changes since the 2019 plan was completed, mitigation strategies. And now we're kind of moving on to the public input portion of this. There is a survey that is currently out and available for residents to complete. You can find that on the town's website. We've tried to post about it a couple times, and we'll be doing so. It's open now through March, so we'll be putting out some more stuff over the next few weeks to make sure folks know about that. We also have hard copies in the town hall, the library, and the senior center. Eventually, once we have a draft of the plan ready, it will come in front of the Board of Selectmen for adoption, and then it will get submitted to MEMA for their review and approval, and then eventually to FEMA, the local district office for New England, for their review and approval as well. So hopefully, that's a brief overview that kind of explains what we're doing with this process. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. So my first one is, is there a deadline for this plan?
There isn't necessarily a deadline, but like I mentioned, it should be updated every five years in order to be eligible for FEMA-related disaster mitigation grants. So that's why we're in that update process now.
So we're right there, and we need to get it done.
Yeah.
So what other departments besides the town planning department are involved in putting this plan together?
Really, almost every department. The local planning team that I mentioned includes department heads, including the fire chief, police chief, building inspector, health director, conservation agent, town engineer, and deputy town manager.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm just curious. Do you know offhand right now how many people have filled out the survey?
I don't have that. I don't. I think that the results go straight to the CMRPC team that's helping us with this, so I don't have those handy.
I was just curious.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Thank you. We look forward to having that at a meeting and voting to move that along. Let us know when you need us. Let us know when, let us know when you need us.
Sure.
All right.
Scott.
So I guess you can stay up there for a little bit.
Yep. Good night, Andrew. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to new business. I'm gonna take them in orders on how they are on the agenda unless, uh, the chief or the town manager prefer it some other way, but we're gonna, we're gonna work down the list. So we're gonna have a discussion and vote on the MBTA Communities Action Plan submittal. And what I'm gonna say to everybody is, we're, we're not going to talk about the MBTA Communities' Proposed Zoning Amendment until we're done with this. We're going to stay on topic and talk about the action plan and the submittal for that. So if you could, tell us what's going on.
Sure. So, um, I had sent a memo to the board a, a week or so ago. Um, I think at the last meeting you had requested that I draft a, uh, submission for the action plan. Uh, this is an interim compliance measure for the MBTA Communities Law, which is due on February 13th, which is in obviously two days. So part of that, it was, it's a relatively simple form, um, filling out, basically it's an acknowledgement that we understand the change in the, uh, requirements of the MBTA Communities Law and that we have a general timeline of, uh, how we would go about complying with the law, uh, in terms of scheduling, um, all the required steps, including Planning Board Public Hearings, Town Meeting, votes, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, that was included in the, the memo forwarded to the board as, as well as the draft responses, so I'm happy to go over any of them, uh, specifically, but, uh, I think generally looking for, um, a vote from the Board of Selectmen for the town, uh, and the town manager to, uh, sign it and submit it.
Okay. So I do have a couple of questions and my, my first question is, and I'm, I'm leaning towards submitting this to meet that February 13th deadline, that in no way is meant to give my full support to any plan we've discussed or any map or any, um, any intention to move forward past this action plan. I want to meet the deadlines that the town is supposed to meet to show that we're acting in good faith. And so what I wanna ask, and I haven't discussed this with five members, you know, the other four members of the board, that I'm speaking for myself as a member, and so this, I highlighted this paragraph here. I, I'm assuming everybody has read every page of this. It's not very long and I appreciate the fact that you filled it out. I'm, I'm somewhat surprised that you filled this out when the, the main paragraph on the first page of this and the last page of this says, "It is the full intention of the town manager to take necessary actions to bring any zoning intended to comply with all requirements to a vote of the Milbury, of the municipality's legislative body in the timeframe described." So this is asking you, as the town manager, to put your name on this and say, "You are going to do whatever it takes to get this to town meeting." Is that how you read that? I mean, that's pretty strongly worded to me. I don't like it and especially because Mr. McCormick filled out the form. You'd think it would be on him to get it to town meeting. And I'm sure that this was filled out together.
Yes.
In conjunction. I'm sure there's been full, full cooperation there. But are you willing to sign that? And is that what you're saying is you are going to get this on the town meeting floor in one way, shape, or another?
Well, for one thing, this, submitting this, um, puts us in at least interim compliance. It would be the Planning Board, the Select Board, or I believe a citizens petition to put on, um, as an, as an article, um, a new plan, a new map, a new zoning. So in consultation, which I've had much of with town council on this issue, um, my understanding is that this essentially is the next step to get us to compliance. It does not bind us to do anything regardless of what, I understand what you're saying. I read it several times too.
That's really what I was getting at is what, what does this bind us to?
But this is not binding the town to, I can't make the town do anything.
Understood.
The next, so it's the residents that ultimately are going to vote on this. I have triple-checked, I have crossed Ts, I have dotted Is. This does not commit the town regardless of I sign it or the Board of Selectmen signed it, if that was an option, which is a little wonky that it isn't, but for some reason they have it as town manager and town administrator, um, to sign this. It gets us to interim compliance and that is all this document is. And I have talked to town council many times about this, about what this means or what it doesn't mean. The next step would be somebody needs to, other than me, the Select Board or the Planning Board or citizens petition to put this back on at the May Town Meeting. And that may or may not happen. And if something does go on, it may or may not get voted, you know, voted on or voted down, you know, as it was in the fall. So that is my understanding. Um, I have asked multiple times and that's what I was told by our town council.
Okay. So I, I just wanna clarify, I know I may be being repetitive, but I just wanna clarify.
No, I understand.
So the only way this goes to town meeting is through an action of the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, which I don't, I don't know how that happens, but they could, or a citizens petition.
Correct.
Which 99.99% that will never happen.
But it could.
I, I suppose it could, but I doubt that would happen.
Right. You are correct.
So it's those three boards and this does not bind us to anything other than it keeps us bargaining in good faith. It still buys us time to see what transpires at state level with courts and lawsuits and everything else, even though the clock is ticking pretty quickly. So I don't have a problem with this form. I've read this several times, line by line. It's pretty cut and dried. It's pretty clear what the intent is and, you know, I'm gonna, I'm also gonna say, I was one of those who voted no at town meeting. I hated the plan. I hate the idea. I, there's no guarantee I'm in favor of any of these maps or even moving this past town meeting. I may vote no again at town meeting, but I am looking towards getting this back in front of the people. If it's allowed to be back there. We need to give people another chance, another choice, because there are financial ramifications of not getting this passed.
Correct.
And there's a housing crisis. You know, you can, you can clarify that however you want, but housing is a real problem and we need more places for people to live. How we go about it and what they look like, that's a different story. So before I give it to the rest of the board, 'cause I'm sure Mr. Sora's dying to weigh in, um, I, I just wanna ask, 'cause you're the town manager and this says, "This is the full intention of the town manager to take necessary actions to submit this." If all five members of the board tonight say, "We don't wanna submit this," will you submit it anyway? You could.
I need the, I need the Board of Selectmen to vote to authorize me to sign it.
Okay. Okay. That wasn't, that's not clear here. That does not say that.
That's, that was what is clear to me from town council.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
No, go, Brian, go. Scott, you should probably ask Brian before you went.
Uh, the only point I just wanna hop on to, to yours, Mr. Chair, is how I'm at least interpreting, you know, "It's my full intention of the town manager to take necessary actions to bring any zoning intended to comply with all requirements to a vote of town meeting." I don't know how you can perceive necessary actions beyond all that she can do within her power, which is bring it in front of us to try and get a district to then put on to the warrant. So I see that as relatively low stakes. I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think this is marrying us to any sort of crazy, you know, we're not hamstringing, um, Madam, uh, Madam Manager to anything really beyond doing what she can do within her means, which is really just putting it on agendas. And you already have done that. We've already said that we're open to having this conversation, we're going to as our next agenda item. So, I don't know, in my opinion, I'm not really two-faced by that. I don't think it's a relatively large commitment. And then just one other point on, on one of the concerns you had had that you had mentioned, which was, uh, the planner filling out the plan and the, the manager signing it. I know, like, I, I, in my professional life, I'm, I work with hazardous materials. We're in the transport of, of gases to homes and commercial properties and we have a lot of agencies with which we need to be in compliance with, DOT, PHMSA, FMCSA, TSA, and with that comes a lot of different plans that you, we have to submit and constant licenses and certificates. Oftentimes, similarly to this list, there's a spot that says person filling out this form and then the owner's portion of it with a signature. So I, that's how I'm perceiving it, is they, they put a, a person filling out this form for a reason, knowing that oftentimes it's not going to be the town manager or administrator filling it out, um, which I think makes sense too. I think it should be the planner who ultimately this type of stuff is more in your day-to-day versus the town manager. So, um, I get them needing an actual administrator or the CEO of the town to sign off on it, um, but I have no concerns with that. I think it's usually, you know, I'm having to fill that out as the Director of Operations because that's my day-to-day, but the owner of the entity I work for ends up being the one that signs it ultimately, so, um, I don't have any concerns with those. Reading through the action plan, knowing that it's a plan that we have submitted in the past, not the same one, but that we have submitted an action plan, I see it as low stakes to gain temporary compliance and allow us time to discuss possibly getting it on town warrant for us to discuss as a town. So that's, that's my two cents for just this agenda item. That's it. I'm saving my, I'm saving my, exactly.
I don't have anything to add beyond what I said last week.
Ms. Grumzik?
I just have one.
Yeah?
You know, like, we're on a tight schedule trying to get, I don't want it to be rushed with picking out a different zoning area. Is it possible to have like a special town meeting after the regular May meeting if we can't come to a decision?
You could, but it would have to be before July 1st or whatever.
Correct. We just have to, right. It would have to be that July deadline.
Probably would be very difficult to have annual town meeting in May and then pull out another special town meeting in June.
Well, we could.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, we could. But the only way that happens is if we move this forward and we're in temporary, uh, you know.
And we, we did get ruling from town council that we are not in, any, breaking any rules by bringing this back to town meeting.
No.
Okay.
No.
I just wanna make sure.
No, I understand. Nope.
I know we get an email saying that. I just wanna double-check, triple-check.
I understand.
I think, um, through the chair, that the document's pretty clear, um, outlining that, um, our town manager has an obligation to the community to keep us in compliance with state law. Um, I fully support sending this in and I fully support this going back to the town meeting floor. I think people need to remember that there are, it's, elections are coming up and if you're not happy with something, you put your hat in the ring and let your voice be heard. That's what democracy is. So I wanna hear if you have an issue, make your voice loud and clear, um, and participate, participate, participate. That's what this is all about. It's your town. So that's all I have to add.
Yeah, so and, and just to piggyback on that and just to be clear for those at home and in the room and watching later on, um, the intent, at least from what I'm hearing, is to put this back in front of town meeting, but everybody needs to understand it will look substantially different. It's going to be a different area. Yes, it's gonna be sort of the same kind of plan for housing, the same sort of buildings possibly, but the areas will be different and we have not ironed all of that out yet. We have to submit this by two days from now and that's all we're trying to do is move it one more step down the road. Whether it's a home run or a touchdown, whatever phrase you wanna use at town meeting, that's yet to be determined. Um, we may not even be able to come up with a sellable plan. I don't know. And the Planning Board will have to hold a public hearing on this. It could be a full room and it could be a resounding no, which is somewhat of an indicator of how town meeting will go. Um, and it may die right then and there. I don't know. But I'm with the rest of the board and I think we need to do our due diligence and at least move this to the February 13th, um, date and be in temporary compliance, especially since we didn't comply to begin with by December of 2024. So, and I know there's a certain number of people who say, "Take no action, do nothing, just let it die." It's not going to die. Um, there's daily articles, every town in Massachusetts with housing problems and trying to comply with this. It's, it's not going to die. Maybe it would if we got a new governor. I don't know. We could always, we could always go that route, I guess. So.
Do we need to, do we need to vote?
We're, we're going to vote if everybody is done with questions and discussion. Okay, I will entertain a motion from somebody on the board.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, please, please make the full motion.
I will make the motion to adopt the MBTA Communities Action Plan as written.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I think, could I amend that to say authorize the town manager to?
Absolutely.
Submit the MBTA Communities Action Plan.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have a second. So we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you and thank you, Mr. McCormick. I know it's been a lot of work and I, um, appreciate all the time you've given us through emails and everything else to get to this point and, um, I wish we could have voted on it two weeks ago, but we really needed this piece of paper in front of us and, um, thank you for all of that. And, okay, we'll move on to new business two and we're gonna discuss and possible vote on proposed zoning amendment on MBTA communities.
Okay. So again, Connor McCormick, Town Planner. Um, yeah, this, this agenda item, similar to what we were just discussing, um, essentially looking, uh, to have a discussion with the board tonight about whether you, being one of the entities that can submit a zoning amendment to town meeting, uh, would like to do so and what that would look like. So, um, I did prepare a memo to the board, uh, to both this board and the Planning Board, um, outlining kind of where we are with MBTA communities, which I think at this point, um, a lot of us are pretty familiar with that, as well as, um, some potential zoning options. Uh, included in the memo was a map with four areas in town, uh, that, uh, through some discussions, these were areas identified as potential locations for, um, the, a new MBTA uh, district. Some of the feedback that I heard after the fall town meeting was that, um, mostly was in regards to the location of the district, not the district regulation themselves. So, um, kind of as we're looking at potentially bringing back a new amendment, uh, for town meeting, focusing mostly on, you know, if there, if, where we might wanna move the location of the district to make it more, uh, palatable to town meeting. Um, if there's any specific questions on the map, happy to, or the, or the regulations, um, as they are proposed, happy to go over that with you. Um, I'd also just note some of the key dates that were pointed out on the memo. I think the biggest one coming up is March 7th is the deadline to submit a zoning amendment.
Sorry, March 7th is the deadline for what?
To submit a zoning amendment for the town meeting. So that does give us a pretty tight timeline. Um, obviously there's only this meeting and your meeting on the 25th, uh, for, for scheduled meetings, um, to, to make a, a vote to get something on the, uh, town warrant. So I, I think that's probably the, the biggest highlight for, for key dates that I would point out, um, but happy to answer any questions or go into anything.
Yeah, so I- Yeah, so I, I have a couple just to start out this discussion with this map, which is in no way meant to be a map that we're pushing or submitting to town meeting or even to the Planning Board. This is a map that's been part of discussions.
Sure, and actually.
So what we've, what we've done, and I will say, you know, Mr. Sora and I have had discussions with the Town Planner and the Town Manager trying to come up with some different areas where we could comply. And so I think it's a given that what really, really shot this down at town meeting was the fact that it was 65 acres all in the center of town. And some people take issue with the fact that we only need to come up with 50 acres, but we were submitting 65 acres because we're fully expecting the state to look at it and go, no, these 15 acres don't count, can't use those, we're going to go with these 50 acres. But it was all pretty much congested downtown. And so if people can see that map that's there, and I don't know if the other board members have really had a chance to digest this, but I want to ask you, because you probably have the numbers in front of you, the red shaded area that's along 146, how many acres is that?
That's purple, right?
Yeah, I think it's the purple one.
Well, there's a red one, so you don't want to get confused.
Well, see, I see that as orange. Okay, all right. Route 146, how many acres is that?
The total number of acres is 46.6, but part of the calculation for this whole, for what counts as acreage towards the MBTA district is something they take out what's called excluded land, which is land that is either unbuildable for a number of reasons, mostly from wetlands or if it's town owned, like a park or a municipal building or whatever.
That's fine. Have you taken out that acreage?
We have, yeah. And that's in the summary table that was also sent to you.
So how many, how many acres is that?
Thirty-nine point three.
So that, that leaves us a parcel, it's 39 acres on 146 out of 50.
Yep.
Okay, and then the Bramenville is the yellow or light orange section. How many acres is that that's usable, not the total acreage?
Twelve point four.
Twelve.
So you'd have to do both of those if you're going to.
Right.
Okay.
And then Canal Street, however, how many acres is that usable?
Fifty-one point six.
Fifty-one usable.
That is the biggest one of the four that we looked at, that one on its own is compliant.
Okay, and then the River Street, West Street area?
Fifteen point five.
I'm sorry, 15?
Fifteen point five, yes.
All right. So, so what we've done with this map, and I know I watched the Planning Board meeting last night and there was also another area that was thrown out there and proposed that we didn't talk about, that we have not factored into any of this discussion. And that was a certain amount of acreage. From what I understood, over by the Mass Pike, Liberty Heights, that area over there, I'm not exactly sure of the area. Is that where it is?
Through the chair, this was brought up at the Planning Board meeting last night by a resident, Mr. Sterns. I haven't had a, that was the first I saw as well, so I haven't really had a chance to dig into it too much. It did appear that some of the parcels may not be countable because they don't have frontage on a road. I also don't know how much of that land would be excluded due to wetlands or whatever, but those. Yeah, I mean certainly the four areas that we're looking at on the map now, we know what those, what the numbers are and that some combination of them could work. Certainly there are other districts in town that could work. There is, you know, so that's kind of why I think we're having this conversation about what, you know, what districts the board might want to look at. I guess also just keeping in mind, unfortunately, we are kind of on a tighter deadline in terms of, it does take some time and effort. We've been using Barrett Planning Group to do the compliance modeling for these. So I guess just kind of mentioning that.
Yeah, I understood, I get that. It would be much easier to just say, go with this 65 acres right here in the center of town as opposed to 12 acres here, 12 acres there, 12 acres there and 15 acres over there. I get that, I understand that. But to comply with this state edict, could we use all four areas or even the fifth area? Could we split it up into five areas?
Yeah, so the town's requirement is to have 50 acres. They do not have to be contiguous. So, and you can break them up into as many as you want, but the smallest they can be is five acres. So you can, in theory, you could have a 10 acre sub area, a 10 acre sub area and a 30 acre sub area.
Okay, all right. So, so to me, at least as a town meeting voter, something like this would be more amenable to getting people to buy in if they didn't feel like it was going to be this congested area of high-rise apartment buildings blocking out sunlight and sunsets for neighbors that are next to the facility, next to the buildings. And, you know, certainly the 146 area makes a lot of sense, even though there's no water and sewer out there yet. A developer would have to probably pony up some money for that and help with that, which, you know, a lot of these developments, you drive around, I was in Bellingham over the weekend and I cannot believe the sheer number of apartments that they built at the intersection of 495. It's, it's just, it's scary to see units like that. But, you know, along 146, a developer would come in and build business space on the ground floor. And who knows what you could get over there? So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward with something. But what everybody needs to understand is even looking at this map that's on the screen, this is not what we're going to town meeting with. We're going to go to town meeting with something that's decided either at this level or the Planning Board level and at the public hearing, because there'll be a lot of input at the public hearing. And the Planning Board has to have the public hearing.
Correct.
They have to.
Yes.
So that will happen, no matter who moves this forward, there will be a public hearing. And that's where, you know, you'll come into this room or at the senior center or the auditorium or somewhere, because there'll be a lot of people interested. And no matter what we come up as a small group, it could change again after that public hearing. We would have time for that to happen, right? If some earth-shattering plan came out of a public hearing, we could still make adjustments and change one of these areas, right?
My understanding is the, the district that gets submitted would be the one that moves forward. I'm not, I would want to check with Town Council if, how much it can change once it is submitted.
At the public hearing.
Correct.
Right, so whatever we bring to the public hearing is what the public would be weighing in on.
Yes.
And at that point, it would be a yes or a no.
Yeah, the Planning Board would make a recommendation at town meeting.
Right. Okay, all right. Who's next, Mr. Sora?
Uh, sure. So first off, I want to thank the planner, Town Manager, from the meeting that we had prior. You all saved me from going on Microsoft Paint like I threatened to do by throwing out some possible ideas just kind of in passing. I know Bramenville was brought up, Mr. Chair, I know. Just in looking at it, we were just, you know, I kind of just spitballed some ideas that, you know, without having any actual, you know, being a layman on GIS, not knowing whether it'd work or not. So it kind of in passing, just passive conversations post-meeting about maybe like a 146 or 122 area or maybe down over here where there's the mills. I appreciate from that conversation kind of churning out something for us to review and having done the background check to make sure that it would kind of fly from at least what Barrett is saying, you know, what they think. I'll give my kind of opinion on this. Out of everything, out of this map here, I tend to favor the 146 as our starting point. And part of it is the fact that it's something that we've tried, we've worked with Sutton on to get a feasibility study to see about running utilities there. They don't currently have it. Mr. McCormick, I know last night you had verified that, or you had confirmed that we would have no responsibility in, if we were to approve this, in getting utilities to any sort of development, that would be on the developer's side.
Correct.
I kind of, you know, if, the metaphorical gun is to our head here on, in terms of trying, of being forced to push some zoning amendments in here that the town, you know, was pretty clear in December and saying that they were not in favor of. I see that as a starting point at the very least to say, hey, we're willing to work with you here, we've passed it, but we're not going to just put this up on a tee for you all to just have at our downtown. If a developer wants to come in here and develop it and have it by right and not by special permit, then you run some utilities here and make it mutually beneficial. Mr. Chair, as you had said too, maybe a mixed use, get some commercial properties there. I like that about that area. I somewhat am lukewarm to these other ones that you have on here. Obviously, if we go with 146 as part of it, we're going to need a little bit more there. So it would involve getting a piece from somewhere. From what you have on Bramenville, I know a lot of this, a lot of the wetlands is what's drawing down some of the gross, but in the net here you have 15. I like the idea of, you know, essentially offering up the idea of repurposing some mills. I know this includes Cecil Mills, I believe, and I think Singletary Arms is encompassed in this. Down on the River Street portion, you've got Felter's Mill. You've got some old mill buildings that are over in that area. And over in the main Blue Howe Canal area, you know, you have things like Cobblestone Village, Cordis Mills, 19 Canal here. So I guess my initial just impression that I have from what you've brought here, I would lean the way of 146 and adding another small piece to get to 50. 146 in Bramenville, according to the number, if my math is right, puts us at like 52. So it's like pretty much right there, really little fat that we're keeping on the bone there. But I'm not married to say any of the other three sub parcels. I kind of like the idea without knowing what the actual number would be, but like a piece of the Howe Canal area, maybe the strip that's Cordis Mills, CVS, 19 Canal, whatever you need there to get us to like 12 or 11 point whatever acres to get to 50 in that scenario too. I'd kind of be curious to know, you know, what my fellow board members think on this. But that's where I'm sort of leaning at with this. Having said that, Planning Board has the ability to put something on their end too to get this as part of the warrant. I know you're not, you don't have the information for what Mr. Sterns had submitted last night in front of Planning Board, but I think he did have some good areas that we didn't necessarily tackle here, namely, as you had said, Mr. DePrae, like over near towards the Ol' Bar, I can never remember the name of it, but.
Liberty Heights.
Liberty Heights area. At the very least, I'd be interested in knowing how eligible those lands are so that at the very least, say if it's not something that we move forward with on our end, it's something there that the Planning Board can chew on and maybe discuss also. I don't know how fast the turnaround is going to be. I also think we do have one more meeting here, so if you are able to get that and we have that as one other option for us to consider, it doesn't hurt. So that's kind of my initial thoughts on this, but I'm curious to know, you know, what everybody else on the board thinks.
I have some questions, because I, you know, you guys are part of this committee, so you probably have a little bit more information than we do, right?
The housing production?
Yeah, well, or you've been helping with this piece of it, right?
Yeah, we gave some, I gave some suggestions on where I would like to.
I was just curious, the Howe Ave and Canal Street, what those properties primarily are, because I know you've got a couple of different developments over there already. So, and industrial, that's kind of what I'm thinking is mostly over there. But what is your take on that?
On the, like the part, the existing buildings on the parcels?
Right, what's existing there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if my mouse shows up on the screen, no.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, yeah, it does.
I see it, yep.
Yeah, so the large parcel here is Cordis Mills.
Oh, okay, that's right, Cordis Mills too, right?
Yeah, and then CVS, the subway building.
Okay.
There's a couple other smaller multifamilies, the Old Time Inn, 19 Canal, a larger vacant parcel here, a couple of their small buildings. We did not include like the railroad court, like one and two family homes.
Okay.
Then kind of going down to the old piece hardware. And then 50 Howe Ave is that large industrial complex and then Cobblestone Village.
That seems pretty low risk to me. I mean, I, I like 146, I like that idea. Bramenville, I think that the folks there are happy they just redistrict it back, I think. So I'm not sure they'd want to be put back into a situation like this.
No, my comments on Bramenville.
Well, I'm giving my comment.
I know, but I'm just, I'm clarifying for you, I'm clarifying for you.
Okay.
It was, it was because we're close, I think, to already having 200 apartments there and businesses on the ground floor.
I just feel like that, that's been a very controversial area and I wouldn't want to do that one. That's my own opinion. I, you know, why you chose it is your reason, I'm giving mine. 146 is almost a no-brainer, it's just not quite big enough. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't know, the West Street, I feel like there's, well, I guess I don't know what all the parcels are. Are they also mostly commercial industrial right now?
Yes, yeah, so if you can kind of follow my cursor again. Up here on West Street, it's kind of the Candle Factory.
Okay, Morris Candle Company, yep.
And then this is the Felter's Mill Building and then this is the Mill Church or like the old Scales.
Scales, okay, so they are, there's not, not a lot of family. You know, there's no single-family homes really, what you're looking at there.
Yeah, these are all existing business or industrial uses.
So I guess, I don't know, I'm kind of torn on this one because I really like the one piece down. It's kind of downtown, but it's low risk because there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of buildings already there that meet this, you know, the two apartment houses that are there already. Plus big commercial industrial buildings that they're not going to go away quickly. You know, I mean, that's going to cost a lot of, a lot of money for someone to, you know, they're going to have to sell that for big money and no one's going to buy it and put up buildings there, really. Realistically, I mean, who knows in 100 years how that would go, but we'll probably have new zoning by then. I mean, I think that's pretty low risk for the town. That's my thought.
That's my thought also.
I had to get more information before I could give my full thoughts, but I liked that one.
I did watch the Planning Board last night and heard all this, so I was more, first I was like 146, but then I saw the Howe Ave and like Katie said, it's mostly industrial and already has multifamilies.
The two big structures on it with the Canal.
Three of them, you got Cordis Mills.
Oh, right, Cordis Mills, I keep, why do I keep forgetting that one? Yes, yes.
Canal and Cobblestone.
Oh, I like that, I like that a lot, yeah.
The only thing I didn't love about it was just, I do think that there's going to be a slight uptick in a butters to that, pretty much on Howe Ave though, versus like 146 I was seeing it is, there's really a lot of buffer between our neighbors and Sutton. But having said that, I agree, I don't think it's, you know, smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood per se. But I think you just have a slight uptick there with the people on Howe Ave.
But those butters already either have housing, housing there, you know, large housing, this type of housing there, or they have industrial buildings, which I think there's been a lot of controversy over a lot of those projects and they've been okay.
Well, and I think that the other thing I was kind of curious to know where everybody else stood on it was the theory behind either, the idea of either having one grid or two or three. So I think this is good input to have here where, I truly didn't know that answer. I was curious to know where everybody was going to stand on whether, you know, there was significance to say 146 needing to be two versus the Howe Ave Canal one being just one, all pretty much contiguous, for lack of a better word, area.
Through the chair, I'm in favor of the Canal Street Howe Ave. I think that the cost of capital to ever try to go from commercial to residential would be so astronomical, it would virtually never happen. Those are businesses that have leases, I know some of those businesses, those are not leaving anytime soon and I can tell you that. There's also already, like we've already mentioned, three housing projects already within there. And a couple of them are very well done, very well methodical, thought out. They have plenty of parking, plenty of spaces, they have done everything by the book and correctly. You know, I know there's one that's controversial and not everyone's a big fan of it and I understand, but there's two that are, you know, institutional to the community and they've done a great job integrating. And there are already businesses that, again, are not going to convert. A lot of them, I mean, businesses and multifamilies that are probably not going to convert whatsoever. It's a very low-risk area and not to mention, it's, I don't know if it gets us brownie points, it's continual. It might, I don't know. But to me, it looks, it looks like the least risk. And I actually think the 146 one, I was, I was like, I was intrigued by it because it's obviously away and it's down actually closer to Sutton, but the. it's obviously away, and it's down actually closer to Sutton, but the thing is, is that parcel's believed for sale, and it's vacant. So, if, you know, people don't want to see trees get cut down, and you're worried about, you know, I hear both arguments, I hear, we want Millbury to stay the same, we also don't want to displace animals and things like that, I hear both those arguments all the time. That would, that's a significant piece of land, and I think a developer would have a field day with that one. So, if you're trying to really try to keep the integrity of the community, and I think if you're trying to make sure that we also comply with MBTA, the least risk is the Canal Street Howe Ave one, and I would fully support that. I am curious about the one by 140, by the Pike, I know there's a large commercial property, when you go past the bar and you continue closer to the Grafton Line, I don't know if it's vacant, I don't know if it's commercially leased still by Wyman-Gorman, I don't, I'm not sure.
I think there's a big for lease sign on some of those buildings right now.
Yeah, so that is also another option, I would be curious, like Selectman Sora mentioned, to see that one, but I'm just going to echo, I'm totally amenable to the Canal Street proposal.
Mary?
I already said my piece.
Oh, you were looking like you wanted to add more.
No.
All right, so, two things to clarify first. So, and I want, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you know better than I do. So, we're talking about this Howe Ave area, people are liking that for the 51 acres. I don't know that all 51 acres would be, would be accepted, but you feel pretty comfortable that 51 or 52 acres are there, and they probably would be acceptable in the plan, all in that one area. But, you got to remember that we just went to town meeting and this whole, yes, there's a dozen reasons why it got shut down, but one of the biggest reasons was it was all in one place in the center of town. If you use that 50 acres there, you already have three big apartment buildings already there, and you would potentially add more, you would be right back where you started, you would be right back to where they're all in one place. And, don't forget, that this 50 acres, I'm throwing a number out there, it's never going to happen, but this 50 acres is for 750 units. So, you would have 750 units, they're never going to happen, you're never going to have 750. But that's what, that's what they're-
We don't know what's going to happen in 100 years.
No, you don't, but that's what they're throwing out there for a number, and those 700 units would be with the existing 120 or whatevers there now. So, the reason I liked Bramenville, and I'm not, we're not voting on this map tonight, right? I mean, if we, if we vote for this proposed zoning amendment, do we have that in writing in front of the board as to what you're expecting us to vote for, for a zoning amendment? Does it include this map?
So, yeah, through the chair, you do have the text of the proposed amendment, I, it's up to the board if you wanted to move forward tonight or look at next meeting, but-
So, so the reason that I was leaning towards Bramenville, I'm just going to make an argument for these areas to be split, is because, you know, and you guys said it a couple of times here with old mill buildings, you know, River Street and other areas, Howe Ave, a couple of them, but Bramenville also has that, where live, flee, or buy is, and all of that building in the back, where you know we just had major problems with illegal nightclub activity and drugs and parties till 3:00 in the morning, bad things happening in that building, border health in there, building inspector in there, that entire building could be part of this, and would be ideal for turning into new housing and having apartments in there, just like some of the other rehabbed mill buildings that have happened. So, that, you know, that's kind of why I came up with that area, not to mention, and I'm surprised there hasn't been a shovel in the ground already, but it's a site where there's a proposed 200 apartments already. So, why wouldn't you want to include those in your map, in your area that you're allowing people to build apartments by right? So, that, that's kind of where I am, I'd like to see it split between 146 and Bramenville, maybe even a little on Howe Ave, but I'm really not, I think you're going to have the same problem at town meeting, if you try to do 50 acres all on Howe Ave, you're still putting it all in one spot.
I think we're going to have the same problem, and I don't know if it's a problem at town meeting, I mean, the voter's going to vote the way they want to vote, and I have no issue with that.
But, you know, we're, we're being asked to support a plan, not just dump it on town meeting, but we're also being asked to, you know-
And that's so-
Support a plan.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying I want to, I want to make it, at least to me, more acceptable if it's spread out a little bit, and I'm not saying we have to use all four areas, but I would like to-
I just think Bramenville's already been brought through the wringer, so.
Is there a way we can find out how many apartments are in the three big units that are already built? Like, would that, would that go towards the 750, no?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess counting towards the 750, they're not actually counting any units that are on the ground now or might be built in the future, it's just the zoning that allows for it. Off the top of my head, I think there's 72 units in Cobblestone, 59 in 19 Canal, and like 111 in Cordis Mills, so if anyone's got some math skills.
They don't count towards the number.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
The one thing I would ask, I would have asked this in either case, but would be to hold off till next meeting, to push us through, the main reason being that the state is taking public comment right now through February-
21st.
21st. So, our next meeting would be after that, at which time we may have some clarity if they do decide to immediately mention any changes. I doubt it, but one of my biggest gripes with this is the, is the fact that they are only capping what we can, or what we can cap affordable units at 10% of any of these projects. I would like to see that increase, because on the other hand, we're being, you know, forced via 40B projects to, because we're not meeting the SHI, which is 10%. So, 10% would only allow us to just keep breaking even, it would prevent us from diluting, but God forbid they were to come back and say, you know, we've, we've heard you, and you can increase your cap to 20% or 25% or something. I would maybe have a little bit more of a dog in the fight of somewhere to where it would actually be, I would be okay with more so, like encouraging somebody to develop in the right spot. I don't think that's going to be the case, but I just think it would be wise for us to not jump right now necessarily, if we still have one more meeting, kind of like what we did with the action plan, just to hear it out and see if there's been any finalization to that in the time.
The only problem was not voting now.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And through the chair, I'll offer to, if you guys want to give me some homework, I can look at some specific areas. Brian, I heard you mention maybe looking, pulling out some of the parcels along Canal Street, out of that area, but if there's any other ones you want me to specifically look at, I can, I can do that, try to do that over the next two weeks.
I wouldn't mind, I mean, I think right now the soft kind of straw poll is Howe Canal, so we may not need to, but I don't think it would hurt. And then, just maybe some of the ones that Mr. Sterns had mentioned at last night's meeting, I think, in particular, I'm just going to say it, because this is how I'm remembering it, but the green one in particular, from last night, Zone 3, but I know there was two others, so if in that time span, Ms. Barrett's able to maybe just get us information as to whether or not that's a hard no, or if it would be applicable, we'd have one more meeting to be able to discuss it, and maybe we don't, maybe we do.
Yeah, so, so just-
We're seeing all options.
So, just keep in mind, if you lean towards the blue area and only the blue area, you don't pull anything out, it's 51 acres and you, you don't get to pull anything out.
Right. Yeah, I think he was mentioning, because I was saying, 146 you would need additional, I would be kosher with that, plus maybe just this strip on Canal Street here. So, I think, Mr. McCormick, you would maybe, I guess, let me know for sake of conversation, the Cordis Mills, CVS, you know, going down the line, those multis in like 19 Canal Street, or however much we would need to get to, to get us over the hump of 50 in the scenario of 146, but that's just more going to be out of curiosity, because I feel like the general pulse right now is just pretty much the Howe Ave Canal Street anyways.
How about Rivlin Street? I do know that they have been clearing a lot of trees, I mean, we've been in contact with that, is that an area that, I don't know what they're doing down there, but-
Yeah, I think you're referring to 100 Rivlin Street, that's an industrial property complex, and they're, I believe they're looking to expand that operation. But, yeah, I mean, like I said, these four areas-
Yeah, if you could look something like that too, I mean, I know-
Yeah, there's other areas I could look at as well.
Strashmankas, I'd brought that up a few times, but now that I know, I can see right through there.
So, I just want to clarify, so that I understand, we're going to hold off on voting tonight, at least until the next meeting. But, when we vote for that proposed zoning amendment, it will need to include the map, the area that we choose.
Yes.
Right? So, how do we, how do we come to the next meeting and have a consensus on what that area is going to be?
That might be hard for me to answer, but-
I'm throwing it out there for everybody.
It'll be like we are doing right now.
We can't, we can't meet outside of a regular meeting, we can't discuss it. So, if you're looking for us to vote in two weeks, how do we, do we come into that meeting with a couple of proposed maps similar to this, highlighting the areas that we have an option of, and then we pick one that night, and then we move forward with the amendment?
Yeah, so I think that's why, you know, kind of offering to put together some proposals or whatever, look at specific scenarios that we've been discussing tonight. I'm hearing most, one being just keeping the Canal Howe area, one looking at 146 plus Canal Street, and one maybe looking at 146 plus Bramenville. If those are the three main ones I've heard tonight, I can pursue those, and if there's any additional ones that you guys want to talk about tonight, or want to email me, you know, individually after the meeting, I can try to look at those as well.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else from Mr. McCormick that you want to get out there? No?
Nope.
Okay, anything else you want us to know?
I think I'm all set.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, good discussion, much needed, like I said, last, last meeting, at least to me, this is probably the single biggest thing we've had to decide on in my nine years on the board, so I do take it seriously, and I do appreciate everybody's input, and everybody trying to come up with new and better ideas, and trying to help Mr. McCormick and the town and Ms. Clark move this forward the best way that we can for the town. So, thank you. How's everybody here? You guys need, anybody need a two-minute break? Everybody good? Because we're going to go into-
I'd rather keep that myself.
Police chief and town manager reviews, and we'll just keep going if everybody's good. All right. So that these gentlemen can go home, we're going to have the police chief come up first. Yes, sir?
I, I, I just, you dragged me out of bed, and I was about to fall asleep, and I'm listening to this.
Okay, first, first-
Ashmankas, five numbers there.
Yeah, I was going to say identify yourself, but Matt.
I'm sorry about that.
Matt, we're mov-
I mean-
Matt, we're moving on with the agenda, you can hang out and jump on to-
Excuse me, you haven't closed the issue that you had beforehand for you, I'm sorry about that.
No, we did close it.
You're asking your own board for input.
No, Matt, Matt, you can-
Under Robert's rules, it's still, you haven't moved forward.
Mr. Ashmankas, you, you, we've tabled that agenda item, you can come back for citizen speak, like other people that are in the room waiting to speak on it, I'm not going to recognize you for this discussion.
You're, you're-
I'm sorry, we're not, we're not going to.
Under Robert's rules, you have to recognize me.
I, I do not have to.
Yes, you do.
Okay, we're going-
This is an item on the agenda, you have not closed it.
Somebody shut it off.
We're going to move on to the police chief's review. Mr. Lewis.
Okay, so-
Sorry about that.
It's okay. We're going, we're going to approach them both the same way. We, and thank you to Ms. Valentine for all her work in putting these forms together, and Ms. Fleming as well. We really tried hard this time around to simplify the performance evaluation, not to make it easier for us, but just to make it clearer and make it more understanding and more meaningful. So, we came up with eight categories that we were looking to review for the chief. Those, I'm going to, I'm not, we're not going to spend an hour going through each and every comment that every board made, every board member made. I did not get to review these ahead of time, we did not share information ahead of time, everybody submitted their own thing, I have no idea what they submitted until I got here tonight. So, that being said, we had eight categories, one of them being finance, and we gave the chief a 4.8 overall. Personnel, we gave him a 4.6. PR, public relations, we gave him a 4.8. Communications and, and working with the board, we gave him a 4.4. Employees and labor relations, we gave him a 4.75. Staff development, a 4.8. And intergovernment affairs, a 4.6. And goals, and goal setting and attaining goals, we gave him a 4.25. If my math serves me correctly, we did it twice, I hope it's right, we have an overall score of 4.625, very commendable, very strong. Thank you very much for everything you've done. I know from my standpoint, as compared to years past, and I'm not saying anything about past chiefs, but we've had a lot less issues to deal with in the past couple of years under your leadership, and it's much appreciated, and we know you're running a tight ship there. And I'm happy to see the 4.625, and the score is pretty much across the board, we're pretty equal, nothing really fell by the wayside, and I think everybody felt strongly about the same. And I'm going to start with Ms. Krumzik, if there's comments you want to make, anything particular you want to hit on, we're going to go across the table and do that, and then we'll give Chief Lewis an opportunity to weigh in.
Okay, as usual, I have a few of your command staff and officers on my cell phone, so I did reach out to a few of them. I just want to share some of the comments that they gave me. Outstanding job, always fair, great communicator, I wouldn't want to work for anyone else, I thought that was very complimentary. He is a rock star, always keeps it on an open environment, best boss I've ever had. We have a list of people that want to work for the Millbury PD, I think that's like the first time I've ever heard that. Very busy and good leadership. He's got a solid plan to bring us from the 1980s policing to modern, and he's fighting for it, so keep up the good work, because I really like hearing all those comments.
Thank you. Good. Mr. Sora?
Chief.
Mr. Sora.
I will save you the drawl of going through my entire evaluation of you, you already received that, but just three I wanted to highlight, that really, really stuck out to me. Number one being finance and, you know, budgetary administration, I think that you have always been practical, you've been reasonable with your requests, I think you do the best job of making do with what you have, to a point where almost, if anything, the fault would maybe be you are, it takes a lot for you to come ask for something like, because you've really stretched something all the way to the point where it's really a need. But, from a town standpoint, and all of our taxpayers' dollars, I think I can speak for the town, and I say, we appreciate that. There's different departments that you could, that you could look at and say- Uh, there's different departments that, that you could, that you could look at and say, you know, these people, it's always asking for more and more and more. I think anytime, I think you've earned the reputation that when there's things that we're bringing forth from a budget standpoint, we know it's a need with you. And so I just wanna thank you for, you know, essentially, it's like we give you a, 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 a a thing that takes five parts to make and we only give you four pieces and somehow you make it. So, thank you. Um, with regards to communication with the board, if I could give you a 12 out of 5, I would've done that. I think you've been super communicable with everybody here. It's been a breath of fresh air for, um, at least, you know, I, I speak for myself with, with certain departments and sometimes like pulling teeth. I mean, you're, you're an open book. I know if I needed to get ahold of you, you're gonna answer the phone. I've heard the same from the people that, you know, are, are, need to be in a very tight relationship with you, like madam manager. And the chief's corners, you know, really when you have a high functioning police force like we have, it's oftentimes gonna feel like, well, where's our money going towards? It feels like there's nothing going on in town. I think that just goes to show the level with which you guys are operating on. It's just, the fact that there's no news is great news. And the chief's corner really allows us to see exactly how much is going on behind the scenes. So I can't thank you enough and thank the entire force with which you manage for everything that you guys are doing behind the scenes and stopping things from becoming headline articles. There are so many of those, particularly in the last year, two years and everything, that you guys have done a great job and I know through the chief's corner. So that communication has been key and I, I for one, really appreciate it. And it helps us be able to relay the message to the people in town as well. And then, but the last thing I just wanted to highlight is staff development. I think you've done a great job of putting the pieces in the best spots that they could be to thrive. I've watched the progression of your SROs and the lieutenants, the, you know, your different squads that you have. I think you do a great job of putting the pieces together to where everybody's working in synergy. Um, there's a few people that are on the force that I've grown up with, whether it was, you know, in high school here or it was in middle school in Grafton. And to see these, these folks, you know, grow and be provided the opportunity to thrive within the system here, I think you've done a great job of doing that. So I, I really commend you on that. I think the development's been great here. And I think it shows when this police force, it seems, everybody is willing and wanting to be a member of this force. So I think, um, a lot of kudos deserve to go to you for that. And that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, I have, you know, somewhat of a funky point of view here to where I've, I moved here when I was 11 years old. So, you know, I've seen this police force as an 11-year-old, as an angsty teenager, all the way through to now a homeowner and a, and a married, married man here. And I can say, it's my personal opinion that there's no better police chief that we could have for this time right now than you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a.
I'm set.
I think you just get up and go now, no. Um, assuming I'm next.
You are.
Um, I noticed this is a different format this year. I think it was primarily for the town manager. So, you know, I'm, I, I definitely graded differently than I did last year. It's certainly not a reflection of you, but at the same time, you've raised the bar so high that that's now where it begins. So, um, I guess to say that, um, essentially you've, we found what's worked for you in the department and the town and you're keeping it running and doing it well. I, I see no issues. Um, I, I guess I'm used to this, um, email we get now, so the chief's corner, it's great. But I, I feel like you've got the ship just running well and, and that's reflective, of course, in your score. That moving it forward and very happy to hear that everyone's happy. I know that I would hear differently if they weren't and I haven't heard anything, so it's great.
My next, okay. Thank you so much for coming before the board. Um, just a little bit extra on, uh, just to, I hate to continue to echo, but I really truly believe that leadership comes from the top, but I can tell that you, you lead from behind and, and you operate from the philosophy that you don't ask others to do things you wouldn't have been able or would do yourself. And that to me is true leadership, is that when you, uh, that's how I run my company. I wouldn't send anyone out there, uh, to do something I wouldn't do. And I can tell that that's your leadership style and I think it's very commendable. Um, I think that you have excellent public relations with the community and it's an ongoing target. And it's something that is very valuable. Um, and I think you use it very wisely. I think there's a lot of, a lot of communities struggle with that. And I think that the public really trusts whatever is being put out there and you get it done really quickly. Um, we live in an information society where we have constant information overload and a lot of disinformation and people spreading rumors. And I think that you guys do a very good job of getting the message out there, stating the facts and solving problems so that we don't hear about them two weeks later or you don't put the town in a precarious position. And I think that's, that's really important when you're running a department. Anecdotally, I, I do know, um, I've spoken with a couple of officers. They have expressed incredible admiration for your leadership. And, um, I am very, we're very fortunate to have you in this community and I really appreciate your service. In terms of, uh, some of these I couldn't grade, I, I couldn't comment on as I wasn't on the board at the time. So I just wanted to let, um, let that be stated. Um, that would pertain mainly to the goals, cause I was not elected at the time that those goals were set. Um, but from what it sounds like, uh, most of my colleagues would agree that you have met those goals and exceeded them well beyond, um, any expectations that they had. So congratulations and great work.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah. All right, thank you, everybody. And, um, as Ms. McKenna said, the bar is set pretty high now. So now the challenge is for us to come up with some goals that will, uh, bring a new challenge for you and, um, see what you can do after this. Okay. So, um, is there anything you'd like to say while you're up there? Uh, I mean, thank you. I'm humbled. I love my job. I love being the police chief. You know, it's, it's our department. I, I say that, it's just not my police department, it's our department, it's the community. And, um, the selection and retention of police officers we have, uh, I wouldn't wanna lead any other group. They're outstanding, they make my job a lot easier. And, um, you know, our last hires have been, have been great. So, uh, it's nice that people wanna come here. We do have a long list that wanna come work for, for this department and, uh, it's great. But, uh, uh, they deserve a lot of credit. Uh, my sergeants run the shifts and the officers do what's asked and, uh, it just runs pretty smoothly. So, but, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I, I, I think that's worth noting that I, I think it's great that you sing their praises and they sing your praises. I couldn't ask for a better situation, really. So, um, thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon for some goals and objectives. All right, thank you, guys. Okay. All right, moving on. We are going to jump right into the town manager's performance appraisal. So we're gonna take the same approach. We did the same thing. We used a similar form. So we had eight categories. And I will say, this is, uh, Ms. Clark's first full year as town manager. Uh, we had quite a few goals set out. We had a, a nice goal and, um, planning session. Uh, and I know she has that on the wall in her office in there, so she, it's always visible to her.
Yep.
Um, and we came up with eight categories for her as well that everybody, um, threw a number out there on. And so, you know, it is your first year. I came into the chairman role only in May, so I had a little bit of time with you as a board member and then quite a bit of time with you as chair. So, you know, as chair, our communication has been spot on and there isn't anything that I don't text her on or email her on or phone her on where she doesn't get right back to me. And if she doesn't have the answer, she gets me the answer. So I appreciate that because, you know, I'm one of those people who wants an answer right now. I don't want an answer two weeks from now. Uh, just give me an answer right now. So sometimes saying, "I will get back to you," and then getting back to me is a good enough answer. So finance, overall rating was a 3.2. And I'm going to let board members explain their rationale on that. Personnel was a 3.8. Public relations is a 4.2. Working with the board is a 4.8. Employee and labor relations is a 4.8. Staff development is a 4.8. And intergovernment affairs is a 4.2. And goals was a 3.6. So the total rating was a 4.257. We'll call it a 4.25, 4.26.
4.3?
Yep, 4.3, yep. So very commendable.
Thank you.
You know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, uh, more goals and objectives for you that will be different than what you've already got on the board. And, you know, we'll get together as a group and, uh, have another one of those three-hour planning sessions. And, uh, and we'll come up with some, some new goals that you can agree to as, as well as we can agree to. So, um, with that, I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Crumzik for anything that she wants to add.
All right, I just dropped down a few things that I wrote. I think you're awesome in public relations. The chain of lights was incredible. Looking forward to it in the Citizens Academy, you had mentioned. As the chairman said, your interaction with the board is outstanding. It's the best that I've ever had on, and I've been on the board the longest. I'm very impressed with your negotiation skills. I thought you did a great job with the, all the unions. Um, I'm glad, I know we had discussed you reaching out to other town managers and you're a wealth of information. You know everybody. And I want you to keep working on your goals. I think you're doing a fine job.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sore?
Yeah, so I think that some of the big things for me that I was looking for in my, in our town manager when we went through the selection process was a lot of fixing up sore spots that I wasn't really a big fan of, of the prior, call it administration, for lack of a better term. The biggest one being communication and I guess forthrightness. And that has been an absolute 180. There's no better person that could've done, that, that we could've had here.
Yeah.
It just speaks so well. I remember sitting on that side of the table and just feeling constantly left in the dark and/or things being hidden from me and got to the town's attention at the last minute where there was no more time to discuss. And ultimately it was just a, there was a lot of, well, this is the last, you know, meeting with which we can do it, so we kinda have to do it. That's been completely changed and improved on. And I just, I can't say how much I appreciate that. You know, I, I, I say this, that, you know, we're elected officials here. We make a couple bucks on it. I'm sure nobody does this here for the money part of it. It's really just to cover, you know, a little bit of our, of our, um, expenses. But this is your career. This is something you've worked towards your entire life. So I know that, you know, a common phrase is, "We're your bosses." But I look at you just as much as a colleague as anything else. So it's a pleasure working with you in that regard. I really enjoy the, I, I appreciate the respect that you have to keep us in such communication. Cause you could easily just forsake of getting things done quickly, not be, you know, bogged down by having five different opinions thrown at you and you having to wade through satisfying all five of them. So I can't thank you enough for that, both at our level, but also at the public relations level. I think it's been an open door policy here and I know that it's been a breath of fresh air for a lot of the people, um, that, that at least I speak to at the town's level. So those were my two biggest things and I'm glad that we were able to hit that. Um, I think that coming aboard here and getting your first evaluation here, being, having, you know, your tenure being all of a year, it's gonna be a little bit different than say the police chiefs who's now on his second go of things and has really established his culture. Establishing, establishing a culture is, is one of the things that I saw as, as a big working point for you.
Yeah.
In that this was a big shift in terms of where the prior town manager's philosophy is compared to yours. I mean, I would say there's.
Not just one manager, to say.
Yeah, exactly. So that's gonna take time. And I think you've done, you've made meaningful strides in establishing your culture here. It's not gonna happen overnight. I know it hasn't been pleasant at a lot of times, just in terms of conflict and people adjusting both on your end, but as well as the employees' ends. But I think we've made a lot of progress there, a lot more than I probably would've thought in a year's time. And ultimately, uh, uh, you know, I, for lack of a better term, a business, cause that's the world I come from, you know, it's, it's really, can make or break based on whether or not the leaders in the organization are able to have people bought in and working with their philosophy. So you've done a great job of that and I couldn't be happier with where you are at this time. During the process of the selection, I think the one thing I kinda looked at as possibly being a working point for you would've been the financial end of things. I think that, and, and I pretty much had said it during your interviews, like, i- if that's the one piece I feel like we, you'll need to gain experience on, I'm fine with it and I am fine with it. I think that you're gonna have less and less reliance on the, the finance director and you're just gonna get those reps under your belt. And then, you know, uh, I, I see no problems i- in terms of where I'm at here. I don't think maybe a point here or there, I would've really seen myself giving any new person, you know, a much higher of a grade here. So I, I'm just meaning to say that, take this as like a glowing review. And, and the last thing I just will say is, I'm very much a big believer on meritocracy. You know, I don't think that we should be just looking to check boxes when we're looking to hire both at the public level, but at the private level. So when it came to having you come aboard as our town manager and knowing that you are our first female town manager in our town's history, I certainly didn't choose you because I wanted to check that box, but I'm aware of the significance of that. And I'll say it's kinda like, you know, it's the one thing I would wanna avoid using this very dumb, uh, movie reference would be like Big Daddy, "We wasted the big surprise on you." I want you to know that it's my opinion, we definitely did not waste that surprise. And I think when all said and done, I think you are, you being our first female town manager, we'll be able to look at proudly, so.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. You need to go for it.
You may not have to always follow him.
It's not fair. This is just not fair at all. But you know what? I, I'm gonna echo a lot of what he said, um, but I don't think if you, just as a colleague, we are colleagues. I have a municipal employee and I'm probably gonna be the hardest one on you because I know everything that goes into it. And I know that being a town manager is impossible. And I don't know if I ever want that job. I say never, but you know, you never, never know. So, and, and that would be so far off because.
The money's right.
It's, it's very difficult to succeed and, um, you've gotta please an elected board and you never know what you're gonna get. I think you've got it great right now, but you know, it can change.
I do too.
You've gotta please the public and they're, and, and they can be a rowdy bunch at times, you know? And you have to please the employees. I don't know how anyone can get this job right. And this is your first year. So, you know, I, I meant to say this before because it does apply to both reviews and I didn't, um, cause I, I was stumbling over, you know, the fall, the act I had to follow. But, um, this rating system, and I rate, I have my own employees I have to rate, so I'm familiar with doing this. And I always look at, you know, the highest rating, five. Like you've gotta be, you know, really special to get that. I, I, I look at four is, "You're doing a great job." Three, "You're doing a job." Four, "You're doing a job." Four, "You're doing a great job." Five, "You're doing like jumping jacks and I don't know, all kinds of circus tricks or something." So just so you know, personally, I don't give those grades out lightly. So don't ever think that you're less than you are, um, especially where I've mentioned, um, you have an impossible job. So, and the chief has one department to run. You have a whole town. So, yeah. And this is your first year. So to get a 4.25, I consider that to be pretty darn perfect. Um, you know, any issues that are in this, they're not really things we need to bring light tonight. That's something we'll discuss and we'll work on.
Yep, thank you.
But you have huge strengths and that's what's showing in this, really. And that's what I wanna focus on. Um, it's already been said, communication is best, yeah. It goes beyond, yeah, Mary's been here through many administrations and I've been here in one form or another through the same administrations. And, um, yeah, it's, it's amazing. And I know you, you'd have more communication if you were given more information at times. There are times that I see things on Facebook and Karen's like, "I didn't even know about it yet." So, but if she did, she would tell us. Union negotiations, I know Mary said this already, but, you know, to, the summaries and the information that we're giving, I mean, I feel like it was pulling teeth in the past and I, I'm not trying to single anyone out, really. It's just that you give us the information without us asking or need, even knowing what we need to know. You know it, so it's, it's been great. Um, you've dealt with a slew of personnel issues and, and that's commendable, really. It's, it's great. And I'm not saying that, you know, the end is near, but, you know, you're dealing with it and you're doing it well. I appreciate that and I know the staff appreciates that. And I know also that if I have an issue or a concern, that you'll jump right on a call and you're available. So, um, so I think it's been an outstanding first year and I think you should be very proud and we're proud.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lozaro, you're up.
All right, I'm, I'm next. Um, so I just wanna start that I came from, um, the leadership of Superintendent Myers from the school committee. And I was a little bit nervous when I was elected that I'd be, I wasn't sure I was getting into. Superintendent Myers.
Nobody does, Nick.
Superintendent Myers runs a tight ship and he's an excellent communicator. Superintendent Myers runs a tight ship, and he's an excellent communicator. But I have felt absolutely no difference in the leadership style here at Town Hall than when I was on the school committee. And I am really excited to have, you know, been able to be a part of this review process. I appreciate our town manager's willingness. She always has a let's-do-it, can-do-it attitude when it comes to projects, fundraisers, me asking if the town would have a collection bin for food, just any, anything that, you know, we, we come forward with. I always feel like I'm met with open arms or an open mind, and we really can, can talk through some of these processes. I think that our town manager's communication is honest. I think it's concise. And I think her decision-making is competent, methodical. And she thinks through all of the options that are in front of her and creates a plan to execute. And that's incredible leadership. And it's very hard to find that. I think that she demonstrates decision-making very well. And she's cognizant of every stakeholder that's involved in those decisions. And I find her leadership incredibly inclusive. And I think that she asks who's not being represented. And I think that that's something that we gloss over a lot, is who isn't at the table? Who's not making these decisions? And how do we speak up for them? And I think that that sort of leadership style is really important, especially today. She thinks creatively, and she's fostered a great working environment. And like Selectman McKenna mentioned, has had to handle very difficult personnel issues. And she's done so with incredible communication with the board. And I've never felt out of the dark on anything. And that spans all the way from our finances, all the way to some of our personnel issues, all the way to what is going on, on Facebook. We always find an answer very quickly. So, I appreciate Ms. Clark's experience here and her work and her dedicate, her lifetime of dedicated public service. It's, it's incredibly commendable. And I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to working with you over the next year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And so, you know, I, I, before I turn it over to Ms. Clark, because I'm sure she has a few things she wants to say.
As usual.
No, it's okay. That's, that's what, that's-
That's why you got such a high rate on communication.
That's what we want. That's what we're here for. I wanna, you know, I just wanna clarify that, you know, especially for those listening, and for Ms. Clark, and, and the chief, you know, the members of the board don't get together and sit down around a table and say, hey, what do you wanna give her? You wanna give her a four? I wanna give her a three. Let's meet in the middle. Let's give her a three and a half. We don't do that. Everybody fills out their own evaluation. Everybody weighs in their own. Every board member has a different, uh, communication style and a different working relationship with the town manager. So, um, you know, it is very subjective. You've got five people with five different ideas of how things are going. And we throw it all together and we come up with a number. And I think the number is very good. I think you're first here. And I also want to thank my fellow board members because this is not one of the easy things to do. You have to sit there and you have to put some real thought to it. And you don't just check a box and go, one, two, three, four, five. You know, everybody's made comments. And Ms. Clark has all those comments. She'll read, she's read every single one of them. She's already responded to me, um, and said, you know, I'm, I'm going to work on this area. And so, as my fellow board members, I thank all of you for getting that done when you were supposed to get it done. I emailed mine to Ms. Fleming, and I said, has everybody turned theirs in? Whose case do I need to get on who hasn't turned them in? And she said, no, you're the only one who hasn't turned them in.
You were. You were the outlier.
So, I was, I was the last one to turn them in. So, thank you, guys, for always having my back and always being there and getting the stuff done that needs to get done.
No, we don't need babysitting. We're good.
Uh, no, no, you're, I, I appreciate all the effort. So, Ms. Clark?
Well, first and foremost, I'm gonna steal a word from the chief. I'm incredibly humbled. It's been an unbelievably awesome year of personal and professional growth. I think you all know how grateful I am for this opportunity. Um, I don't take it lightly. I'm very serious about the work that I do, how I do it, collaborating with people. And, um, it really has been, when, you know, I've had the opportunity to really reflect on kinda the last year, but even the six months that led up to becoming the town manager a year ago. I cannot believe it's been a year that we've been in this room and I was selected. And it really is an honor of a lifetime. You know, I think about, you know, the former town manager's departure, not having a transition plan, really sort of just jumping in. And it was the most natural thing for me to do. I wasn't frightened of it. I said, let's do it. Let's do this. And everybody on this board has been nothing but supportive, um, since day one. And I know I can call any of you anytime if I have a concern or if I just wanna bounce something off of somebody. It's not every day that you get to work with such talented, caring group of individuals. I have been on or supported many, many, many boards over my career. And, you know, you see things in the paper. You watch different meetings. This is not always the norm to have such respect and camaraderie. So, I just wanna say how much I value that. And that the fact that I get to sit at this table and be part of this team means a lot to me. I do know, and I've reached out, I have reached out to all of you, there were a couple of things that were a little bit, not surprising, but I just wasn't aware of. So, I really would like the opportunity to meet with the folks and just kinda make sure I understand what all of the comments meant. And if there's things that need to be done or course corrected or that there's concerns about, I would love to have, and I do not wanna add, five more meetings to my week or month or more. You are also busy with your private life and, and what you do here. But I think more regular intervals of a check-in. And, um, you can, you know, ask my staff that are here tonight. I am really big on feedback loops. This is how I work in teams. And I also, um, use an appraisal tool. I do check-ins monthly. I talk about the budget. I talk about, you know, there's a one-on-one, and then there's a very specific appraisal approach that is a deeper dive at the beginning of the year. And then there's three-month intervals where you're saying, are we still on the same page? Or, you know, how are those goals going? And I feel like that works best for me because I don't know what I don't know. And I would love to have more information. If you hear something or if you have an idea, I wanna be able to know and do something about it if I can, or just have an awareness of it. So, if it pops somewhere else, I'll go, okay, I know what that is, and just address it. I do know that I have grown tremendously in the finance area. You know, in being hired, everyone knows I'm not a finance guru. Doesn't mean I don't have experience managing budgets, as I certainly do for years, working in municipal government. I have learned an awful lot. And, um, you know, certainly meet with the finance director on a daily basis. Sometimes I bounce things off of Ms. McKenna, which is super helpful to have that depth of a bench too. And it means a lot. And as far as, you know, personnel goes, I think, I will echo that there were, um, a number of things that kinda landed in my lap that I had to deal with and things that were not dealt with in previous administrations, plural. And in order to be successful, I need to have an all-star team. And I would never be able to get these good scores unless it was the people that work with me. I cannot say enough about the people in this room. Also, in my office, Nicole Valentine and Amy Fleming, they keep me going every single day. There's, it's like a, an emergency room. You know, it's all day long.
A triage.
We are a triage center down the hall. But all of the department heads are brilliant and just are so good at what they do. And they put up with a lot from the public. Things have changed, and we've talked about that. There's, um, a lot they do. There's a lot to learn and continue to have to learn to be able to give the best services to the residents. That's what I want. I want the best for the town. That's what I think about with every single thing that I do. Whether it's, you know, um, a personnel matter, changing something operationally, looking at the senior center parking lot. These are all the things that I think about on a Friday night when I'm sitting home with my cat. Because there's so much that we can do, it, you know, and it's helpful, again, to have all of you helping me steering the ship and creating those goals. And again, I do apologize. I didn't get them out sooner. But they're in progress. They're all good goals. We'll accomplish all of those. And again, I just wanna thank, um, not only the people that work here and make me look good every day, but we have so many residents that come in and bring food and presents and tell us that they're so happy with the Board of Selectmen, and they love the town manager's office, and they feel like they're being heard and respected. Those are the wins. You know, you don't do it for that, but it does balance out the person that screamed at you earlier because of their taxes. So, it's all about that balance. And, um, I'm just really grateful for the opportunity. I'm really, really grateful for such positive feedback and support. And I definitely will follow up with all of you. And, um, I do wanna recognize Ron Marlborough and Denise Marlborough, who come out for every single public event for me because they really believe in me personally and professionally. So, thank you, 'cause I know it's late. I love you guys too. Thank you. That's all. Thank you. I just, um-
We love you too.
Well, I do. You know how I hug you guys, whether you like to be hugged or not. But that's probably not happened with another town manager either. But I just really, I'm, I'm emoting. I'm just very, very happy. There could be a group hug at the end if you want, but I'll let you decide. All right. Thank you again from the bottom of my heart. This is awesome and very heartfelt.
Thank you. And, uh, we will get to that group meeting for goals and objectives, and we'll review what we have.
Okay.
We will get to that.
Sounds good.
We'll figure out the best possible time. Okay. All right. That's good. Everybody still good? Everybody needs a break?
What's that?
Okay.
I said the last goals and objectives is pretty good.
We're gonna go to new business board discussion on goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen. We can make this relatively painless.
Good job, everybody.
There, there are, there are goals there. Um, we'll just briefly review them, just so everybody knows where we are because we're asking the chief and the town manager to, um, fill us in on their goals. These were goals that were set up by us a year ago. Uh, so, we are in the process of working on these. I don't know that any are actually completed, but-
I did put, um, status on, sorry, my voice is shot.
Sorry. So, disposition of old fire department headquarters, that is, because people ask me all the time. That's probably the number one thing that I get hit up about. Um, we are exploring possible uses for that building. As you can see, it has not yet been torn down. So, everything is still on the table. We directed the town manager to create an RFP process with community input, which will be a community input meeting. And we're trying to get that on the agenda for sometime in March. So, we are working towards meeting that goal. Housing production plan. Uh, we have a, I believe, and Mr. Sora is the chairman of the Housing Production Plan Committee. So, he can correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, our next meeting, there will be a presentation on the housing production plan.
There will be.
And, uh, so, there's already been plenty of community input sessions held and surveys completed. And, uh, the housing production plan, I'm going to get her name wrong.
Emily.
Emily, presented last night to the planning board.
Good night.
So, if anybody saw that, you're, you're as filled in as much as we will be again in two weeks. And so, we are working on that goal very diligently. Thank you, Mr. Sora, for, I know you've had lots and lots of meetings working on that and lots of hours put into that. Department head and committee presentations, uh, the past six months anyway, we've had eight, maybe, different committee chairs and, uh, department heads come in and present. We're gonna keep that going. I think that's very informative for the board. And I think it's also good for them to come in and tell us what they're working on. And it, it motivates them to continue working on their goals as well. So, we're gonna keep those going. Who's up next?
So, um, the fire chief.
Fire chief.
And, um, Amy, I, 'cause I asked her the same question. I said, who haven't we had in yet? So, I think it's just the chief. And then I was gonna ask, most of the boards or committees that came in were ones that came, like, you know, a night Lori Keef was here and somebody from, so how, do you wanna hit, like, all the boards and committees?
I would put it out to all of them and ask them, I would ask them who wants to present.
Like, everybody. I think it's helpful. And then if there's vacancies, people can learn more about what it is that they're doing. And, okay, so I'll let Amy know that.
They can make a pitch for their board or committee and-
Sure.
Tell us a little bit about what they're, what they're working on, and it'll pique some interest in the community.
For example, there's an earth removal committee.
Yeah, well, there may be one less member on that soon.
But there's a committee for, there's a lot of committees.
Okay. And then, uh, I did skip one there, downtown business association. That was kinda one I got behind, and I, I think we should pursue that more. And I'd be willing to put a little legwork in that. But I think, you know, you've, you've been here for a year in your role, and I think you've developed, you certainly have a relationship with the cheese shop and the candy shop.
And the candy shop, yes, I do. And the milberry package store.
So, maybe, maybe put it in the back of your head that, you know, we could reach out to a couple of those business people and see if they want to be part of an association that would help spearhead some downtown conversations and, and things like that. So, I would like to see that get started somehow. And let me know if I can help you in some way.
Maybe we could do a walking tour-
Sure.
-when the weather's a little better.
That would be great. Um, explore town-sponsored events. Uh, I know Mr. Lozaro is working diligently with several other town people, Board of Health and, uh, Ms. Valentine and yourself, to get a farmer's market going. And I see advertisements on Facebook where people can sign up already, even though it's not until June. And that's fantastic. And that's gonna go a whole bunch of weeks through the summer. And I hope it makes it through the entire summer. Um, you know, community events, uh, the parade's coming back. And I'm sure everybody here will have a role in helping that off the ground. And, you know, somebody said to me, ah, a parade, oh, it's not gonna be anything like the Lions Club. It's gonna be, I'm like, and I said, so what? So, so what if it's only a half hour long? It's the first time in many years.
I think since the bicentennial.
And only 300 people come out, it's gonna be a blast. And then next year, it's an hour long. And then the year after, it's an hour and a half long. So, you have to start small, and you gotta grow. You can't knock it out of the park the first year. And so, I'm all on board with that. I think that's great. And then we had municipal needs and forecasting. We have a new police station on there. I'm not sure how that got on, on our goal list, but, uh, we have-
It was either yours or mine. Mine was getting heavy. I added it to your side.
The town manager, police chief, and finance director have met to discuss, uh, a 2019 study and funding and committee structure. Committee will be appointed by March 25th. So, you know, where we, where we ultimately go with it, I don't know. I know several locations have been kicked around, and we're just getting the fire station open and just getting the school on the books. And so, it's, it's definitely a conversation we need to have about how solid of a, solid of a plan we'll come up with. I don't know. But we'll keep it on our goals list, and we're gonna keep working on it because it is definitely a town building that's needed. And if the police did move out of this building, it opens up a world of opportunities for the Town Hall to remain as the Town Hall and expand operations into bigger rooms and maybe even have a, I don't know, what? You could do a ton of things downstairs. Mr. Lozaro's looking for some kinda youth center or gathering point or meeting- center or gathering point or meeting place. You could have a big space downstairs for that if you got the police out of the building. So lots of opportunities and we'll keep having that. So that's our goals. If anybody has anything they want to add to Board of Selectmen goals and objectives, that's the update.
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Did you have something, Mr. Lozaro?
No, I, I-
Feel free.
Well, the only thing is, is, you know, with, with regard to the downtown business association, you know, I, you know, run a page that's called the Millbury Small Business Coalition and I would be happy to, I'd be happy to, I don't know if I can donate intellectual property, but I'd be happy to donate intellectual property to the town for their public use. There's already a collection of small business owners that are on there. They advertise regularly. I think it'd be really good to add teeth to it instead of it just having it be a page where people could meet in person for free with no membership requirements or cost associated to it. I think that a lot of folks get swallowed up into, you know, nothing against, you know, some of these, some of these networking groups, but they can be really costly to startups and it's really not easy, especially in today's economy. So if we as a community can, you know, offer that service to people, I think that'll be very valuable and it'll attract new business. So I'd be happy to help with that.
Could you repeat the name of your page again?
The Millbury Small Business Coalition.
I mean, if you already have something and there's people already involved, I mean, I would love to jump on that instead of starting from scratch.
It's just a Facebook page.
And you did mention it before, but I forgot about it. But yeah, if we can connect and figure out how to, that's awesome. Thank you.
It's about 283 members on it.
Wow.
So it's, some of them are business owners, some of them are just residents and they, if they want to look for a business in town, then they can go on it.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
People are always looking for, especially electricians, plumbers.
Yep, I am.
Yep.
There's a lot of local people.
I need a new outlet.
All right. All right. Thank you, everybody, on that.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are going to go to new business five is a discussion on housing insecure. We're looking for an update for that. So I'm not sure who's taking that role. Okay?
Steve.
I'll take it, sure. Yes, the update. So during the week of January 20th, Lieutenant McFall and Julie, who I mentioned in the past is a great resource for us, made contact with approximately four homeless individuals. Their camp was located along the bike path on the Worcester-Millbury line. The Board of Health offered shelter and services, but all parties declined. A few hats, gloves, blankets and hand warmers were distributed. This group was very aware of the services that are available to them. They know where to get a shower, where to get their laundry done. They're fed at night at McDonald's before that establishment closes. They also explained that they feel safer in a tent on the bike path than they do in a shelter in the city. A new trend we're seeing for the homeless population is to get arrested then refuse cashless bail. They're safe in a cell. They get fed. We ran into that a couple of weeks ago with a shoplift at the mall. Male was arrested and just didn't want to get bailed, didn't want to leave. So he stayed the night and we took him to court.
Yep. Three huts and a cot.
Yep. The Blackstone Valley Emergency Shelter has contacted the PD last week and this week to advise that that shelter would be open if anyone needed it. That's in Waytonsville. And our in-house clinician had been working with a Millbury resident that has been homeless for a while now. The individual does not want to be homeless any longer and that person's gainfully employed. This person was referred to the Blackstone Valley Connector and that agency is helping this individual with obtaining Mass Health, getting a copy of their birth certificate and other documents, which will assist in getting housing. This is just one of the examples of a positive outcome because this person is accepting services and continues to follow up with these agencies. So that's all I have. Anyone has any questions?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
The only question I have is, so you mentioned Blackstone Valley Shelter reached out to you as a resource. So now say, one of those four individuals does request services from you, what's the protocol that your department has that would allow them to utilize those services? So would you drive them to, like, because this is a hesitation, right? So why, you know, they have their tent, they have their stuff, you know, why would they want to go to a shelter except if they're in serious danger of like, you know, frostbite or something like that, if it's zero degrees out. But say they do want to use that service, does the police department offer that to them to drive them to that said location or no?
Absolutely. If they reached out and they needed transportation, Waytonsville is only a couple of towns away.
Yep.
We would transport that individual out there and drop them off at that shelter.
And then if they're done in the morning, because it's only a night shelter, would they be able to call the department to take them back to get their stuff if their stuff is out still? You know, is that a service?
We wouldn't refuse to go out and get them. Hopefully, maybe Northridge PD would help or just meet, meet at Sutton and we could, we've done that before. Lee Fugg.
So there is-
Sutton, Sutton grabs the Millbury, you know, it's not that far depending on our staffing. If we go out there and do that, we would.
I think we're gonna do it with the snowplow guys. Sorry, I had to throw that in.
That was funny.
I mean, no one's gonna be turned away. If anyone wants help and, and they call the PD, we're going to help them. We're never gonna say, not our problem, goodbye. It's just not, it's not what we do, it's not who we are. So if they, if they want the services, they want the assistance, we'll, we'll be there to help them. They just, they don't necessarily reach out to us.
Right.
We're just not trusted. We talked about that before the last meeting where there's a warrant for their arrest or they've been in some trouble. They just, we're not their go-to.
Right.
But we try to make contacts. We try to build those relationships that, so they can call us, but-
And how often do you do contact, point of contact? So is that like a monthly, do you do that monthly or do you try to do that as, in a weekly basis with some of these folks that are on the highway? I had a resident reach out to me because there's, when you come off of the Mass Pike, there's a large tent that's encroached right on the edge of it and they were concerned that the tent would ride onto the road. Is that something that is possible or is that something-
We don't go out on a regular basis, Mr. Lozaro. It's not something that we, we go out and do or assign a shift to do. It's the same individuals that set up shop at the Upper J, the Route 20 to Panhandle. And that's it. We don't go walk on the bike path. Mass DOT is aware that there's, there's camps down there. It's their property.
Yep.
So yeah, it's not something we, we follow up on a, on a, on a regular basis.
Okay. Who would follow up on that then? Is that something that you would recommend, that you would say the state is obligated to follow up with?
State? I mean, the Board of Health has done, done their share. Again, if Julie contacts us, we'll go with her. We don't want her going alone, obviously.
Right.
So we would do that. It's just, I don't want to say it's not a functioning police department. It's just, it's just not something we do regularly. But again, if people need help, that's what we're there for. We're, you know, we never close. We're always open. We always answer the phones. It's just, it's the way it goes.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
I did notice that, that Blackstone Valley is having a big fundraiser soon. Did you know that?
No, the Blackstone Valley Connector?
Yes.
Okay. No, I didn't know that.
It's at Blissful Meadows. I can't remember the date, but it's chocolate and wine. And I'm like, oh, that's-
It's in March. It's in March.
It's in March.
Well, go.
It's a good combination.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else, Julie or Nicole? You wanna add anything or you good?
No, I just was curious on just an update. That's all. Super brief.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. That's all the new business. That was a lot. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for all the input. All right. We're gonna go to management update.
So I'm gonna go kind of quickly because I don't have my cord and it's about to die. It's, let's, no, I'm fine actually. Thank you. It's quick. So thank you all and good night. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just personnel updates. We had a retirement and I don't honestly remember now what the other, anyway, we had a couple of vacancies open in DPW, so we kind of moved some people around. So we filled the, one of the equipment operator, two positions and a laborer. So that's great. Keith is thrilled. We still have opened the assistant town planner. That's just a really hard one to fill. And there's a number of communities around us that have the same, good night, same position open with around the same pay. It's just a tough one to fill. And obviously, we want to get Connor, somebody as soon as possible because obviously he's been working on a lot of big projects. So let's skip over a couple of things. Just my usual shout out. DPW has done an awesome job. We've had quite a bit of snow. I want to give a shout out to John Padoni, who's the foreman. Keith is on a very well-earned vacation down in Florida and it's, that will have snow three or four times while John is running point. So I did check on him today just to see if he was doing all right. So he knows he can call and scream if he needs to, but he's doing a great job. The Station Five brick facade is finally completed. It just took a really long time to get matching brick, but I just wanted to report out on that. We talked about, Andrew Lowe touched upon the bid that needs to go back out again for furnaces and insulation. We're hoping putting them together will get a bite because so far there hasn't been any hits. I think I sent you some pictures. The painting's been completed.
Yep, very nice.
Now the ceiling looks awful in the floor, but one thing at a time. But I weren't really, Josh and Lori put a lot of extra hours in to get that done. So there wasn't so much disruption in programs. Also, as I mentioned, I am hoping to meet, well, I have scheduled a meeting with the railroad, so I'm hoping to get more intel for you guys on that and the parking lot situation. We did get a cybersecurity grant. This is actually the same one the second time because I got this around the time the former town manager left and I was just not able to oversee it. And there wasn't money. It's just training, but it's really important. So this time I've asked Nicole to run point, but they were gracious and said, no problem, you know, we, we can take you guys. So that should be starting soon. We talked about the goals and just a couple more points on finances. We did have an internal meeting with a lot of staff who accept cash. And I did get a handwritten letter from a gentleman who may or may not be on this Zoom this evening, who heard, a former employee of the town who feels very strongly that we always should be able to take cash. So I just want to acknowledge, and Scott, you asked the same question, and come to find out, there was a cash policy. It's amazing what you learn here every day. It just never was really implemented and we can't really fully just because of the fact that there's always gonna be scenarios where we have to sort of take cash. What we did come up with is looking at adding uni-pay to some of the other offices so that there's more options for people to pay online, therefore reducing the cash. So I just wanted to say that. We did meet with a company, my computer just died, but I will go off memory. We met with a company called, I believe it's CSS. And it's a bunch of municipal people that created their own consulting company. So they can pretty much, they're like a municipality in a box, like an MRI. I don't know if you've ever heard of that company. But they have created software to help track capital planning. And we got a grant, a community compact grant. God bless Connor. I don't know when he writes these grants in the middle of the night. But it's for like 10 or 20,000 and it's specifically to help us better manage all these spreadsheets that we got from everybody after we sort of resuscitated that planning committee. It generates charts and, I mean, it's just, it just helps tell the story better, I think, to FinCom and residents about the needs and how we're spending our money. So we're gonna go with them. So they haven't started yet. They just did a presentation for capital. And just, you know, we're working on the budget. As you know, we're, we were 1.2 million over the levy. So we've been doing a lot of surgery on this end and meeting with the school regularly. They're also in the middle, as you know, you pointed out, of the teachers' association contract. So we sort of have to sort of figure out what to budget for that. And also not getting into it, but we'll just say that Maya came today with the rates and we're 15% higher this year for health insurance.
I thought it was gonna be 20, so that's good news.
Well, we are better than, there are communities around here that came in at 20% or higher. But that translates, 15% translates to about, I think, 250,000 or 275 that we did not plan for in the budget. So that's above the surgical work that we did to get it backed down. The other thing is our assessment for Worcester County Retirement is 300,000, which is way more than what we anticipated. And also the medics for the retirees is through the roof. So those three, three things alone are jacking our budget way up. So we're looking at some creative solutions. I have not really gotten back to department heads yet because every time I think we're at a number or what I think we're gonna have to do, then we get, and we also just got some, an email from BBT a few hours ago requesting three articles to be put on. So this is a very, very tough budget year and I'm looking at things like no professional development. I don't even know if we're gonna be able to do COLAs.
I would say we're not doing COLAs in Oxford this year.
And in looking at other budgets that are already posted on different town websites, like Grafton's has been up since January. Everybody is dealing with the same situation. We are not unique. But I just wanted to say for right now, that's what the driving costs are and that's what we have to look at and how we're gonna deal with it. So my goal is to do a presentation for you all at the next meeting, really going through all of this in more detail and kind of where we are at least then, because I know you have to close the warrant and all of that. So it's just basically been non-stop meetings as you would predict on the budget and meeting with the school and kind of, you know, navigating all of that. I don't know, did you drop something?
No, thanks.
Oh, everybody's okay.
We're like with the ghosts.
I was looking to see why the guy dropped.
So anyway, that's all from memory.
Oh, good job. Oh, yes. My iPad's getting low too.
Yeah. I've used it a lot today.
The mix didn't even work today.
No, we didn't even use it. We didn't bother. It's been going off my phone this whole time.
Yeah.
Just a question, you may or may not know, but the whole leasing the parking lot from the railroad for the senior center, what was that costing us?
It's not clear. It's a very strange lease from the 90s and it, it conflates the town with the friends. So I, I, I would not use the same lease. There's a lot of confusion in my opinion about how it was put together. And I don't know, I'm not clear if there actually really ever was a dollar amount.
Sometimes those things like window field was always a dollar for a hundred.
Like a buck or something like that.
No, I understand.
But what I don't know is if they're gonna say, because they know we need it. And, and they've been great. I mean, the guy I've been talking to, he came out, he's coming out again or we're doing a Zoom or whatever. I don't know. I mean, we don't, I'm hoping they'll be a good partner. And if we put the money into the upgrades, which desperately need to be done, I, I don't see them selling it. That was a discussion point because even-
Railroad never sells.
No, it's federal property, so they're not gonna sell it.
Nothing else they'll store but the railroad ties there.
You bet. So I-
Railroad will never sell.
Did not know the lease. I had never seen the lease. I had to look for the lease. I had to have help from staff because once I realized how bad the parking lot was, I thought, okay, well, we can't just fill in stuff and do stuff. We need permission. And then I saw the document, which, surprise, surprise, revealed that it was in fact-
Taxed all those on private property.
You know, expired. So I'm working on it. It's all, we gotta do something. They don't-
People's posted on it.
Yeah, I sure will.
When did it expire?
I believe in the fall.
Okay.
I'll, I'll dig it out for the next meeting.
So it's a recent expiration. It's not like it expired three years ago.
Yeah, it's not. No, 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 no. It's nothing like that.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll keep you posted.
To get us more information, we would like it.
Of course. I'll report out after the meeting I have.
Does anybody have anything else for the manager?
No.
Thank you.
Everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Review and approve previous minutes. If everybody's read them and everybody's good, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right. Yay, back on the page.
Oh, my God.
We made it.
We're going to go to dates to remember. Mr. Sora, it's all you. And there's a bunch of them.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
If everybody hasn't heard my voice enough tonight.
Right.
Our legacy, your vision, together we build the future. Special fraud and identity theft prevention presentation from Milbury Housing Authority residents, presented by Sherwood Cassingway, Vice President, Milbury National Bank. Highly professional and trained fraud specialists from Milbury National Bank will provide support and guidance on what to do next and how to avoid scams in the future. Awareness is your first line of defense against fraud. Stay informed and avoid scams and tap into prevention tips and learn how to recognize scams and protect yourself. Friday, February fourteenth, ten AM to eleven thirty AM at the Large Community Room here at, uh, at ninety-five Elm Street. Enjoy pastries, muffins, and coffee. All MHA residents attending will receive special Valentine's Day gifts and local Milbury stores gift cards. And next, I have Milbury Seniors Narcan Public Safety and Health Training, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, Town Hall in the Large Conference Room, one to two PM. Presenters, Lieutenant Stephen McFall of the Milbury Police Department and Milbury Board of Health Director Julie Van Arslan. Learn how to recognize an opioid overdose and what to do if one occurs. Participants will receive Narcan information and training, free and open to all Milbury Housing Authority residents and Town of Milbury seniors. For more information, please contact Juliette Marie Somerset, Resident Services Coordinator, Milbury Housing Authority, seven seven four, seven zero eight, nine six seven eight. Students in seniors' social hour, no registration required. Come join us for a holiday craft and to meet our community police dogs, Micah and Dusty. Will be joined by two classes from Assumption School, February twenty-eighth at two PM. Milbury Public Library. Questions? Contact Teresa Bull Rice at five zero eight, eight six five, one one eight one. In partnership with Resident Services of the Milbury Housing Authority and the Massachusetts Coalition to End Isolation and Loneliness. Tell our legislators why you love the Milbury Public Library. How has the Milbury Public Library helped you? Share your story about why your library is important to you at lovemasslibraries.com. You can upload images of notes and photos or even a video demonstrating the value of libraries and library services. These stories will be shared with state representatives and legislators to help demonstrate the importance and impact of the Commonwealth's libraries during the legisate legislative budget season and beyond. Interested in more info, please, uh, follow the link that was posted online, um, HTTPS dot dash dash M B C L legislative agenda dot com. Spelling it all out. I always get lost in the weeds on a URL. Never fails. Milbury Farmers Market, applications are now open. Hosted at the Asa Waters Mansion, first Thursday of the month, three to seven, June through October. Interested in becoming a vendor, please see the attached application, twenty-five dollars per market or one hundred dollars for the season. Submit your applications to ASW Mansion at milbury dot, uh, excuse me, at milbury MA dot gov. The Milbury Farmers Market is looking for your vendors. The twenty twenty-five Milbury Farmers Market will be hosted at the Asa Waters Mansion, one twenty-three Elm Street, on the first Thursday of each month, from June to October, from three to seven PM, rain or shine. Vendors who wish to participate can submit applications and the Farmers Market will review each application. Decisions will be determined by the end of March twenty twenty-five. Any other questions, please contact Tracy or Kate at five zero eight, eight six five, zero eight five five. Annual Boston Bruins PJ Drive.
Sorry, I passed it over.
It's that time once again that the Milbury Public Library will be joining the Boston Bruins, Cradles to Crayons, and Wonder Fund to collect new pajamas for kids in need, beginning February first, twenty twenty-five, and running through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Drop-off locations include the Milbury Public Library, Elmwood Street School, Shaw School, Milbury Senior Center, and the Milbury Town Hall. The most needed sizes are eighteen to twenty-four months, two T, three T, five dash six, fourteen slash sixteen, eighteen slash twenty, child XXL, adult medium. Donations can be made directly to the Cradle to Crayons PJ Drive via, uh, Amazon wishlist. Questions, contact the Milbury Public Library, five zero eight, eight six five, one one eight one. Kindergarten registrations for Fall twenty twenty-five, uh, and the Elmwood Street School will start March twenty twenty-five. Registration will be done in person or online. For in-person registration, the dates are March fifth and March sixth, from nine AM, nine thirty AM to one thirty PM, and then five PM to seven PM for both days. Requirements for the registration is a registration packet, which is fourteen pages. Please return the entire packet and the packets can be filled out online, downloaded from the school website, or picked up at the school. Packets must be completed in order to register your child. If registering online, please note that the required documents will need to be uploaded. And lastly, we have annual town election, April twenty-ninth, at the Milbury Junior Senior High School. And the annual town meeting will be May sixth, at the Milbury Junior Senior High School. Ballot seats for the upcoming election will include Board of Selectmen, two three-year seats, Board of Assessors, one three-year seat, School Committee, two three-year seats, Board of Health, one three-year seat, Planning Board, one three-year seat, Library Trustees, three three-year seats, Redevelopment Authority, one five-year seat, Redevelopment Authority, one two-year seat, BBT School Committee, one one-and-a-half-year seat, and Housing Authority, one five-year seat. Nomination papers are available and must be returned by Tuesday, March eleventh, at five PM. Any questions, please call five zero eight, eight six five, nine one one zero. And, Mr. Chair, that is it for Dates Remember, unless any other board members have any.
Okay. Does, thank you. Mr. Sora, does anybody have anything that, uh, we didn't cover that you wanna throw out there for a date?
I can't, cause we don't have a date yet, but get your thinking caps on for Dollars of Scholars.
Oh, yeah, Dollars of Scholars.
Is it already again?
March, probably.
I think it'll be a little later.
March, April, yeah. It's coming.
Are we gonna be on the same team, Scott, or are you gonna get, go up against Wigs again, women in government? Remember Katie, we were the Wigs?
I've had the same team for eight years, I-
You can't break tradition.
Oh, we gotta break them.
Yeah, that's right. It's on, like Donkey Kong.
We were tied last time, so now we're here.
Okay. All right.
That was fun.
Yeah, that was.
We're gonna keep it in your corner, Mr. Sora, and we're gonna do mail.
Sure. I have two. Dear Mr. DePree, please be advised that the Milbury Police Association, Local One Twenty-Eight, hosted a golf tournament this past summer to raise suns for our canine unit. The association raised four thousand six hundred four dollars, which will be deposited in our canine donation account for care and equipment of the department's canine dogs. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three A, I request that the Milbury Board of Selectmen accept this donation and authorize the Chief of Police to expend the funds. Sincerely, Brian Lewis, Chief of Police. And I will make a motion to, uh, accept this donation and authorize the Chief of Police to expend the funds.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
And then, uh, Mr. Chair, we did have one more unanticipated mail.
Let's get that in there too.
I love the unanticipated mail.
That's right.
I love it. I like surprises.
Yep. Dear Chairman DePree and members of the Board of Selectmen, the Milbury Senior Center has received an extremely generous donation.
Excuse me?
Following Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three A, I'm requesting that the Board of Selectmen accept these donations and authorize the expenditure of the funds. These donations will be deposited to the Senior Center gift account and it was from Bank Hometown, total of four thousand five hundred dollars. Best regards, Lori Keef.
Awesome.
Yes, absolutely. And I will make a motion to accept these donations and authorize the expenditure of the funds.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you very much to Bank Hometown. Very much appreciated. Okay, uh, roundtable discussion and citizens' feedback. Uh, many people have dropped off a Zoom and the room is clear. I see no hands. We are going to go to on a good note, community events and positive stories about Milbury. And I'm gonna start with one. I hope I'm not, uh, stealing any thunder from Mr. Lozaro.
Oh.
Uh, I I'm perfectly fine if you wanna toot your own horn. I I I don't mind that at all. Um, but on Monday, Mr. Lozaro hosted a senior center luncheon, uh, catered, had music, uh, gave out flowers to all the, uh, attendees.
I wish I could've made it.
And, uh, little little bags, little bags of candy for the seniors.
So nice.
And, uh, a lot of nice pictures on Facebook and I I just wanna commend you-
Send some, send some.
For doing something like that. I mean, you've only been on the board less than a year and you've jumped right in with both feet. And I think, you know, to get into the senior center for something like that, it it just gives you, uh, a real following of people who support what you do. And I know you have, you know, uh, other things going on in town besides your car detailing business, but, um, all of those people will remember you for that. And they're probably still talking about it and wondering when you're coming back to do another luncheon.
A lot of people feel special.
So thank you for doing that. And I wish I could've attended, but tough Monday mornings. And, uh, thank you.
I think the timing of it is important to note too, where it's not uncommon to see elected officials doing events on the run-up to an election, ye- of which their term is expiring, that maybe they're running for reelection for it. You just got elected. So I think the timing of it goes to show really, you know, the earnest intentions behind it.
Absolutely.
I stand with Scott on-
Thank you. It's funny you say that, cause they all, they all asked, they go, so what are you running for? It's so funny you mention that, cause I was like, I was like, nothing. I'm already here. And I'm like, I, you know, and I have, thank you very much for your kind words. I I really appreciate it. And, um, I I, um, think that some of those residents, um, really find a lot of community in it. And I think, um, just to kinda commend, I think she dropped off the call, but Lori was incredible with, you know, helping organize and, um, her staff introduced me to everyone and I got to learn about their food pantry and I got to meet, um, I I hope I don't butcher her name, cause we're both Italians, so I shouldn't, uh, Mrs. Pajani, Pajani, does that sound right? Um, she was a long-term school committee member, um, and-
Jane Pajani.
Pajani, yeah, I said it correctly. Okay, great. Um, and she was incredibly helpful and she volunteers a lot of her spare time to, um, St. Vincent de Paul and to that food pantry. And having just a ten-minute conversation with her about her public service and what keeps her going was actually one of the most impactful conversations I've had, um, with a resident recently. And I I was really grateful for that opportunity, so thank you very much. And, um, my, I I don't have any, um, any end on a good note, except that I'm really confident and excited for, um, the next chapter, uh, that lays in front of us as we obviously have a big, uh, there's a lot of change happening and we just did our reviews and I'm really thankful for the leadership in this town and and that we have a really strong working relationship. And I hope that it continues. So that's all I have for, on a good note. But thank you very much for both of your kind words. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one quick one. I just wanted to, um, once again, I'd like to thank the board for supporting the Central Mass Veterans Support, Inc. We hit over five hundred members
Oh, my gosh.
past month, so.
Wow.
Things are going really, really well there. Amazon just jumped on and is donating pallets and pallets of stuff, so.
Sorry, I just didn't wanna forget. There is actually a few more bags of groceries that are in the bin for there for, um, when we put the bin out for Christmas or the holidays, so we could get that.
I have a meeting when, next Wednesday, so I can probably swing by.
Okay, or I can, whatever works. Okay. I just didn't wanna forget.
I just wanted to thank the town and this board for supporting them.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, I think we've covered everything on the agenda. Um, we do have executive session, so Mr. Sora is gonna bring us into executive session. And we will only come out to adjourn the meeting. So, Mr. Sora, if you would?
Sure. I will motion into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Purpose Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of the Public Records Law and the Holding and Suffolk Construction Co., Inc., v. Division of Capital Asset Management, four four nine, Mass. Four four four, two thousand and seven, to review an attorney-client privileged communication.
Okay, and I do declare. So we're gonna do a roll call. Ms. Krumzik?
Yes.
Mr. Sora?
Yes.
Ms. McKenna?
Yes.
And Mr. Lozaro?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We are in executive session.